This Celine City Council work meeting on the 2018-2019 budget to order at 6:36 PM. It was President or myself, Mayor Morrow, Councilmember CEO Dylan, Gearbaugh, McClellan, Mitchell, and Mayor Protem Taha from city staff. We have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, Deputy Treasurer McDonough, Harkson Rec. Director Scruggs, Police Chief Hart, and DPW Director Fordice. The rest of you in the audience this evening, we welcome you and we encourage you to sign in in the back to my left. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Councilwoman Dylan and I just spoke, and I think it would be appropriate to add after farmer's market, just a line item that says "other" in the event that folks have other issues or concerns they would like to bring up regarding the budget. So, moved by the CEO as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dylan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. We come now to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, then we will transition to the FY 1819 budget. And if I recall correctly, Chief Hart, you had presented, we had worked our way around the table, Councilwoman Dylan got, I think, most of her questions in. I think she has a few outstanding.
No.
Yeah, okay, that was my question. That's what we just talked about. So, Councilwoman McClellan, you had not asked the Chief any questions yet. And Councilwoman Mitchell, were you seated here?
I was. I have not asked questions yet.
So, here's what we're going to do then. Chief, unless you have anything else that you'd like to add at this time, I'll yield the floor to you first. Then I know Councilwoman Dylan has a few additional questions, then we'll jump to Councilwoman McClellan, Councilwoman Mitchell, and then we'll do one more round in the event that other council members have thoughts or observations that they were not able to share two weeks ago.
No problem, Mayor. I just didn't know if we wanted to go through the memo again for the CEO's benefit since he was not here at the last meeting, or...
I think your whole presentation in your memo was very clear and succinct.
Okay.
Unless Mr. CEO has... That's right. So, Mr. CEO, I will also allow you the opportunity to ask questions of the Chief since you did not have the opportunity to do so at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Do you need him to provide an overview, Jack, or are you good?
No, no.
Excellent. Okay. Ms. Dylan, the floor is yours, and I would remind my colleagues, please be sure to speak into the microphone because we are recording tonight's meeting.
Okay. Most of my questions, I think, were answered at our last meeting. What I wanted to touch base with again is the SRO officer and just some of the logistics of that. If, in the what-if scenario, is what if this officer were to be hurt? Are we then in a position that we're going to have to backfill that position and is it unable to fulfill that job duty? So, would we have to backfill from staff, and then would that put us down a person?
I think that it would, if by mind, I see that as, depending on the injury that the officer has, if it's something that they could still perform most of their duties and it would be allowable through their doctor or our doctor, if they were injured on duty, to perform those duties, then we would certainly work with the schools to put them in that position. But if they were to be taken out where they just could not be at work anymore, that is something that we would have to work with the school district on. But we just don't have the staff at this time to, in my opinion, be able to put someone in the school as a replacement.
Okay. I guess that was my question is, are we under obligation? Is there an officer there?
I think that the contract that we have tentatively drafted prior to my arrival here allows for an out for both the city and the school district if they no longer wanted to participate in the agreement.
Okay.
So, at that point, we can possibly invoke that. But I'm sure there's something that we would be able to work out with the schools.
And then, I guess they just try to figure out the logistics of it. So, when that officer is on leave, how are you rotating from within?
A medical leave or just taking vacation?
Just vacation.
So, there's generally an understanding with school resource officers that they take their vacations along with the breaks for the schools. So, it's something that, it's just kind of an understanding that when school's in session, they should be there. Now, certainly there could be events that are coming up or, you know, training that we just can't schedule in the summertime, that we may need to pull them out for a day. But no, at that point, we would not backfill that position for those days. They would just simply be using their leave time.
So, then when school is not in session, any breaks, days off, summer, do they report back to the departments and get into that rotation?
Well, normally, the SRO really kind of becomes a part of the administrative team. So, especially in the summertime, they're filling vacancies. That's when, you know, we have recent graduates from, let's say, Eastern or MSU, and they're looking for teacher jobs. There's retirement. So, they generally get to participate in those interviews as well. I know I did for four years. And you just become ingrained into the school culture and become a member of their team there and kind of pitch in during those breaks. But our goal right with the program is that they would really be the school districts for 100% of the time, as it's written right now conceptually. So, there's Safety Town, there's plenty of other programs that go during the summer that would, you know, provide opportunities for the school resource officer to interact with the students in the community.
So, then, now we're confused, I'm so sorry. So, that they're actually not going to be part of your departments?
Well, they will be. They'll...
They'll be an officer, but they're not going to be on duty, so we can use the department officer.
Well, I'm trying to get to the heart of your question. If we were to have, let's say, a situation take place in the community, yes, there's still a licensed police officer through the state of Michigan, through the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards, MCOS, and they would be required to respond if we had, let's say, a situation on the west end of town that didn't affect the schools. That police officer would be able to come out and assist us in police operations.
So, what is the benefit to the city?
Well, I think there's a lot of questions that get asked when police departments, cities get involved with these type of relationships with the schools. And being asked that question many times myself, I think the benefit is to our children that are in our community. Those are the folks that really benefit the most from a school resource officer position. We have the five schools, nearly 3,000 students, their parents, the faculty members. So, it's our community at large that really benefits the most from this position.
I'm sorry, let me rephrase. I understand the benefit of the position without question. But what is the benefit of the city owning that job versus it falling under the schools?
Okay. And that's a great question. And we have Officer Ringe right now, who is in the schools quite a bit, teaching team. And Officer Ringe right now is a part of our minimum staffing levels. So, there are times where Officer Ringe has to cancel his training because we would go below the minimums to have him within the schools. And there's times where we might have three officers on, and then he is in the school teaching. So, we would not be dealing with those minimum staffing requirements at that point to have Officer Ringe over at the schools. And any school, any issues that may happen on school grounds, Officer Ringe would then be assigned to that case and deal with that specifically. So, it wouldn't be pulling from our resources and our minimum staffing levels on a day-to-day basis. It would be Officer Ringe's to handle, much like the SRO over at Pittsfield, Officer Booth. And of course, we would want them working together. So, there are situations that come in through communications that you are aware of through the city manager's office that take an incredible amount of time and resources to try to weave our way through in our current climate with social media and things that are shared. So, to have that resource already in the school and be able to deal with it would certainly alleviate some of the responsibilities of on-duty staff.
So, the city's still going to be incurring 25% of the salary plus all the benefits and the liability?
As it's currently written, and City Manager Campbell, correct me if I'm wrong, they would be paying the schools, as it's currently being proposed, would pay 75% of a senior officer's position, which would then backfill a new hire. So, they would be, in essence, paying for a new hire police officer to be out there. The benefit to them is they're getting a senior police officer with years of experience and training to be in their school.
Okay. As far as salary and benefits?
Correct.
Right. But a senior officer, are we still in longevity and all of that?
Still, it's still part of the cost. The cost is the cost.
Okay. Okay. I think that's where I'm going to stop for now. I think I'm on this. Thank you.
Very good. We'll go to Councilman McClellan, then hit Mr. CEO, and then we'll end with my colleague, Mr. Mitchell.
I don't think I had very many questions. I think most of the ones that I had were answered about the liability on the volunteer in public safety program. We talked about that, I think, last time. One question that just kind of popped into my head was, the SRO officer would just be, would it be for all the schools then, or just for the schools that are within the city limits?
Would be within the schools that are in the city limits, the five schools that are within. But understand, we are kind of in a unique situation with our eastern border, with the school, the high school just being across the way. I envision this being a pretty close working relationship because there might be a student at the high school that's having an issue, but they may have a little brother's or sister that's at the middle school or in one of the elementaries.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that first. That's what I thought, but I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. CEO?
Thank you. Chief, the only question I really had was on the vehicle purchase. Normally, they take the old vehicle, they auction it. I see the new one you're either going to roll over to the SRO or to the volunteers in police service. So, that would then eliminate the chance for an auction of the older vehicles, is that correct?
That would be the proposed plan, yes, sir.
Okay. So, you're, in effect, going to increase the fleet by one vehicle?
Yes. In essence, I'm giving up my vehicle.
Oh, you're giving up territory?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That was fast. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. Chief Hart. I guess, when I look at your budget, it is what seems, compared to the other departments, it seems like a fairly significant increase. And I just wonder, as a general trend, thinking about the debt we've had to take on, thinking about the steel costs that are unsure, I'm just, I'm concerned that we had talked as a council in some general terms of adding staff to our DPW, that that was going to be our area of growth. I have no doubt that the things here can be perfectly validated as far as, you know, this is what... But I am concerned that your department between the last year and this year is a significant increase. And so, I just, I'd be eager to see what my council members feel about that as far as a general trend. I want you to have what you need to do. Specifically, I'm really concerned about overtime hours because that's not a lot of bang for our buck. But just so you know, those are my areas of concern as far as how much growth that represents.
Sure. Was there a particular area besides the overtime? Because the issues there are a lot of the illnesses that have been going around. So, we have, we're not immune to that and due to our minimum staffing levels.
Right.
You know, that, you know, our overtime is, it's very delicate.
It's going to be...
It's kind of a, you're walking a fine line.
And healthcare has the same thing, where you have to have the people there.
Sure.
And, you know, so I get it. So, I guess I was looking, like, supplies for operations, you know, originally, they were, in 2017, they were around 8,500. This year's proposed budget is 12,005. Equipment allowance, the cleaning of uniforms, I underst... You know, you talked about bidding out some of those costs, which I think is a great idea. But you have higher costs reflected in your budget.
Yes. And what we have to think, we've had three individuals come forward within the last week that want to be a part of our reserve program. So, we're going to have to buy them uniforms and equipment that go along with it. So, there's a trade-off. We could have more reserve officers that are volunteering their time for events, parades, Summer Fest, Winter Fest, things like that, that we may have incurred some overtime costs for.
Right.
So, there's a trade-off.
I see.
In equipping them as well.
You have to put some upfront if you want that return. So, if I'm hearing you correctly, if you have these reserves, is it possible to reduce some of the overtime, or is that strictly not event-related?
Well, predominantly, they do, they're required to work a certain number of events each year.
Okay.
So, we do want them out there. They assist with traffic, the 5K runs, you know, the various events that are around. It's just trying to rebuild that program. We're going to have to invest upfront into, you know, the uniforms and other equipment and some training, you know, to get them up to speed. So, we feel comfortable in putting them out there with a police officer.
And then, the building repair and maintenance line item, I didn't see anything in that, in that kind of little bucket of money for '16 and '17, and this year it's coming in at 4,000?
So, it was my understanding, I'm sorry, which line item are you looking at?
Sure. So, I think the fastest way, if you look at total police department, and it's like 10 lines above that somewhere. So, what line item would it be? Do you want me to give you a bucket number?
It's 930-000.
Yes, sir.
Building repair and maintenance.
Yes, sir.
So, I would like to invest up to $4,000 in painting. The area that is behind the police door, the non-public area, I think our public areas look really good. I'm not sure when the last time the police department was painted. I do have...
Sure.
You know, offices that have drywall patch that, you know, are visible on the wall. The paint is, you know, really, really thin.
Right.
I'd like to invest some money into the employee areas of the department and our conference room, just to kind of update and refresh that, you know, for a better feel on the police department.
Sure, sure.
Just to take care of our building.
You know, you talked a little bit about conference and training and the increase, you know, from 2016, it was just under 4,000, and your proposed budget is 15. You know, and I understand there's a need. So, I guess with all of these things, there comes a trade-off. And I just, I want to be mindful that, yes, we have a little bit of money, but we have debt, and we have those extra retirement benefits that we have to pay, something else that's skipping my mind. So, I'm just, you know, when I look at these things, I am just concerned about this trend, and it's a jump. You know, I think I said to Mr. Fordice, you know, I want you to have your stuff. Like, I want you to have what you need. And I don't know other, what to say other than I am concerned about this growth when we had talked about investing growth in the DPW.
Sure. And I just want to touch on the conference and training. It's extremely important to have a well-trained police force. If you have officers that are not up to date on contemporary statutes and case law or methods, then we are putting the city at risk.
Right.
Because that is probably one of the most cited responses to a lawsuit is a failure to train.
Sure.
So, it's very concerning in the sense that there has been a lot of video training that's been done, and there are times when that's applicable. But we have to go and do hands-on training and really provide our staff members with that for the protection of not only them, but the community as well.
Sure. And I really appreciate your looking out for the city liability. And I think I came in at the tail end of our consultation with the police review. I'm not even going to remember.
Mr. Hess?
Mr. Hess, yeah. So, and I think that training was one of the issues. And it could be that maybe there needs to be some trade-offs. I don't, I don't know. I'm just expressing my concern.
Sure.
And how that works out, you know, with you and the city manager. So, I'm just concerned for those reasons. And I appreciate all that you do.
No problem. Thank you.
So...
Any further, Ms. Mitchell?
No, thank you.
Additional questions for Chief Hart? Well, I'll go to Mr. Gearbaugh, and then jump back to you this minute.
Just a couple of ones, ones to follow up on Ms. Dylan's question. In terms of this new reserve officer, if we, you know, approve it and everything, it's going to be a 100% position, correct? It's not 75%. So, we're going to be having an incremental 25% plus whatever activities that were associated with Officer Ringe gets realigned to this person. So, we really are going to have additional flexibility in our staffing, correct?
I just want to make sure that I'm following. Are you talking about the SRO?
The SRO, correct.
Because I thought you said reserve.
The SRO. Sorry, I have two things. I mixed it up.
Okay. So, the question is with the SRO and incremental...
The position we're filling is going to be 100%, correct?
Yes.
So, that's incremental increase of .25 for your staffing.
Correct.
Correct. But then also the duties that are currently being done by Officer Ringe are moving over to...
The SRO position.
SRO. So, then we're going to have that activity freed up. So, what is that, another quarter of percent, a quarter of a position?
I don't have the hours with me right now as far as how many hours he does spend in the school, but I think it would be fair to say a quarter.
So, that should help offset some of the overtime because now you've freed up an officer to basically cover some of the time that wouldn't have been done, correct?
It could, yes. And part of the training increase too is to also backfill some positions that when we have to send folks to training. We had two dispatchers that were in CTO training last week to learn how to train new police officers. So, we had a lot of moving around of staff and some overtime just to send folks to training.
Yeah. And that's kind of where I'm looking and trying to support this position, is that you're basically asking for more support, but we're also being able to free up and not necessarily have to use all that overtime when we're trying to... It just means that however you fill that new position, whether it's with a senior officer or whomever, however that gets backfilled, that person will now be used in other capabilities.
Yes. Yeah, they will be trained in the dispatch center and following that state law and...
But it'll be part of their regular appointment. It won't be part of their additional overtime hours.
Correct.
The one thing I do wonder is, when you mentioned time being spent out during the summer, I would hope that some of that time, from that perspective, us paying for that .25 is used to help offset vacation time and all that. I wouldn't see that individual spending more than their .75 out at the school. So, I'm being more, I know I'm getting into the nitty-gritty, but I'm seeing that as we're adding additional staff and freeing up things as a result of this, and so that we should be able to reduce the operational aspects of coverage.
But I also want to bring to your attention that there's a time to get a new police officer up to speed. They have to go through 16 to 18 week, depending on how quickly they're picking things up, field training officer program, where they will not be allowed to go out on their own. So, that FTO process is several weeks long, and that's where they learn, you know, the procedures of the police department, the community, our borders, you know, all of the in-house training that takes place in that FTO. So, it could be, you know, it's going to be a couple of months before we can, you know...
Oh, no, I know. I'm talking about over the three-year period.
But down the road, yes.
Down the road, it should be, yes. The other thing, when you mentioned reserve officers, what's the, what's the size of reserve officers? How many should we be maintaining? What's that type of situation? I don't want to become one of those towns where everybody was a deputy.
Yeah, that's, and it's, I'm very cognizant of that. And what is the intent of someone that wants to be a reserve officer? I would like to see us, we're currently at three, to get somewhere in the eight to 10 range to be available for our events and to come along and ride along with police officers.
And then, just one point for Ms. Mitchell's benefit. We did approve a four-year new contract, so significant impact on the budget was that huge increase of...
The salaries.
...cost of living and salary that's coming through. So, that is attributed to part of that.
Thank you.
The last thing, when we put in place the whole new policy procedure and the company that we've been using and all that, is that going to continue, or will we be looking to transfer to something else, or how do you proceed with that?
For the time being, we had just, I believe, within the last month or two, had paid for another year. So, it's something that will be with us for at least a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Ms. Dylan, I believe you have an additional question?
I did, and I couldn't figure out what my writing was from the notes the last time. Now, I found the line item I was referring to. On the budget, it's page 13, and this may be something that you should know. It's page 13. It's the last one. It says grant/donation police equipment. It was something that was zeroed all the way, and now it's at 14,000.
I believe that is going to be for the tasers.
For the tasers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, is that a new, it wouldn't fall into any other category? Is that why, is this a new category? Is that...
No, it's an existing category.
But we've never had one.
We get a grant for any expenditure. We have a revenue line associated with it so that we know if the money's coming in, where it's going to be spent.
Oh, okay.
That's coming in specifically for police equipment.
We may have used it for when we got guns at one time. We got a donation for guns.
Police, or in some technology for the cruisers as well.
Yeah, we have the...
For the Molok Foundation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That was, okay. Now, I know, I know. Thank you very much.
Any additional questions, Ms. Taha?
Yes, thank you. Chief Hart, in your original memo, you, under increased training, you mentioned the meeting with Sheriff's, and then Washnaught County Chiefs of Police, which hadn't taken place at our last meeting. Have you been able to deal with that?
Yes, we did meet last Wednesday up at the sheriff's office with chiefs, directors, and the sheriff, and asked the sheriff to take the lead in providing a lot of the training. So, we're going to be coming back. There's been some policies that have been distributed to area chiefs, trying to upgrade our mobile field force training, getting ready for an election year in 2020. So, brushing up that training, the crowd control, also doing some bias-based policing and other training. So, we should have a two-day training class that should be scheduled by the end of September for all our staff to go to, and it'll be local. If we don't host it here, it could be at Pittsfield, it could be over at the sheriff's office. But we're going to start utilizing some trainers within the county and the sheriff's department's reach to kind of help us, you know, get up to speed on some training.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Taha. Anything further?
Actually, from Chief Campbell. The $4,000 that Chief has mentioned about doing painting and everything, where's the budget line for just this building's maintenance and maintenance?
I thought we had some... Is there any money? There's a municipal building, it's the 631.
Are there funds available within that to cover this cost?
I believe we have Mickey Joe, Mickey Joe, we put in some dollars for administrative side at least at a minimum, and some carpet and paint.
Okay. I'm just thinking, would we build it into his operating budget?
Because the department has it themselves, and that this, they get a printout of what their line items are. And so, if you want to maintenance, you want to make sure it has to cross that building line, and it will get reallocated at the end of the year for each square footage of the entire building.
Okay.
So, you just put it in there so they make sure you got it in the budget. But it does, I mean, it all going to get charged to his, anything that happens into that cost center for the municipal building is divided out by the department, and we ask the accountant to stand just in the financial statement.
So, we are spreading it out instead of having it all tracked within one fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's tracked within one fund, and then spread out at the end of the year based on the...
Reallocated, got it. Okay.
Allocations.
I just didn't want to put something into a budget that isn't necessarily, should be reoccurring if it really is part of an existing operating budget that already has funds available.
Chief, just a few questions and comments as we transition from your presentation to Mr. Fordice's. And I believe I touched on this the last time we met, but it's come up again this evening. And I think it's a very legitimate concern, overtime costs. We could reduce our overtime expenditures if we were able to recruit and retain some part-time employees. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And again, I just want to state that for the record. That's, Chief Hart can tell you this. I think any public safety official in Washnaught County or southeast Michigan could confirm this. But recruiting talented, capable individuals of character and integrity is very difficult across the board in law enforcement today.
That is correct.
So, I know you've talked a lot about recruitment and attracting talent and nurturing that. That was actually something you emphasized very strongly when we interviewed you. So, I encourage you to maintain a focus on that, that critical area. The other comments that I would make, and I do appreciate the statements that... The other comments that I would make, and I do appreciate the statements that were made by my colleagues, in particular Councilwoman Mitchell, about controlling cost. You know, we are stewards of public resources and we want to make sure money is spent wisely. I look at the police department and public safety more broadly as sort of our baseline. And ensuring that Saline remains a safe place to live, to raise a family, is probably our single greatest responsibility. And so, I think ensuring that our firefighters, our EMS workers, and our police department personnel have the resources they need to do their jobs is critical. And as we've emphasized this evening and in the past, providing them a decent wage and benefits is probably more important today than ever because attracting and retaining talent is proving to be more and more challenging. I guess my final comments, because this was talked about this evening and it was talked about two weeks ago, maybe my perspective on a school resource, school resource officer is a little different, but I see that position as being extremely beneficial, not only to the department, but the city and the community as a whole. I think of our students, our faculty members, and the parents and staff of our five schools as being our customers and we're in a customer service business. I don't have kids, but I would want to, I would feel very comfortable and very pleased if there was an officer in and out of the building on a semi-frequent basis. And I also think it's a great opportunity to have our young people connect with a police officer and form strong relationships and develop respect for a profession who's often been marginalized in recent years. So, I appreciate your work on that. I know that Superintendent Grayden and some of his associates at Saline Air Schools, this is a priority for them and I'm hopeful that you can make it happen.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else for our police chief before we transition to our DPW director? Chief Hart, thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Jeff, do you want to go over the presentation you prepared for two weeks ago? Subsequent to that, you are welcome to touch on this memo dated April the 30th, which relates to an email message I think I sent to you, the city manager, and my council colleagues last week. I appreciate your work on this. And then subsequent to your remarks, we will go around the table. I think I'll start with Councilwoman Mitchell and end with Councilwoman T. Got some reports, Charles?
Yeah, I did have two supplemental memos tonight, both dated April 30th.
You have an aerial truck?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, which is the other that I missed?
Well, no, the streets that you mentioned and then the...
Okay, just those two.
Then the bucket truck, yeah.
So, why don't you go over your report and then if you want to transition to the aerial truck and then street repairs, that would be terrific.
Okay, thank you. So, budget highlights for the Department of Public Works for FY '19. I think the biggest one is the budget as proposed at this moment has an additional crew member. That would bring us to 13 of the, you know, hands-on, in-the-field people, then myself and office manager that round out the department. 13, I think, is a pretty good number. It's still three below where the department was nine or 10 years ago. Further back than that, even further back than that. So, 16 was the peak at some point in the past. I think 13 is a pretty solid number and any, I would definitely, I don't anticipate proposing an additional crew member in FY '20. I think we would want more look at equipment efficiencies, contracting services, and methods like that to address any labor shortages beyond the 13 crew members. But that's just a long-range forecast. The budget includes a significant investment in equipment. Much of that investment was amended into '18 several meetings ago, but still remaining in the '19 budget is a new plow truck. This is a larger truck than we've purchased in the past with a more payload capacity and a slightly different salting and liquid control system. It has a side wing, just like our last, the last plow truck we purchased has. That's worked out very well, so we specified that on this truck as well. Basically allows us to plow about 30% more roadway with the same pass, the same amount of labor. It does come with some downsides, it's not quite as maneuverable. This truck being larger and a tandem axle, we might have to do a little bit of thinking in terms of our routes to keep it on more major streets, but I think the capacity of it will be well worth the planning effort there. The budget also includes a conversion of parking lot lights to LED. We have converted parking lot five to LED already and there's a few fixtures in other light, in other parking lots that have been converted, but this would, the funding in here would allow us to convert the decorative fixtures in parking lot one, get those refurbished similar to the way the Michigan Avenue and North and South Ann Arbor light fixtures were refurbished and converted to LED. And then there's also some of the shoebox lighting for two, three, and four would be converted. Of note, there are no streetlight conversions in the FY '19 budget and that's because we should be wrapping up our final round of conversions to the tail end of '18 here. We laid out a three-year plan for streetlight LED conversion and we are now in year three of that. That has not, will not convert all of our streetlights to LED. That converted all of our mercury vapor and all of our high-pressure sodium above 100 So, that, those are the ones that had the greatest payback. So, I'm going to wait for technology to catch up a little bit before moving on the 100-watt high-pressure sodiums because the payback period on those is pushing 10 years. So, we'll look at that in future years. Also, within my local and major street maintenance budgets, included some additional professional service money so that we can do some of the quick fixes. As we continue to stretch out the life of our road assets, unexpected things happen. You know, a piece of pavement that we're, you know, predicting will have three years left, won't make it through the winter. So, we need to be able to respond to those. An example of what that kind of funding has done for us already were the patches on Bennett Street last summer. We were able to tack that on to an existing contract, remove those sections that had, excuse me, very rapidly deteriorated and get those patched in. Monroe Street, which is coming up in, yeah, in May, that's another example. That's a stretch that we knew south of the bridge was in bad shape. We were, you know, trying to extend the life of it until we could coordinate it with the bridge rehabilitation over this winter. It just went too bad to stretch it out any further. So, these types of funds allow us to make those kind of quick, quick adjustments to the plan. Some kind of departmental efforts, not necessarily budget items so much, but this year, we're really focusing on training, similar to Chief Hart's increased efforts there. We are really looking for cost-efficient opportunities. And in Public Works, there are a fair number of free and inexpensive opportunities. So, we keep our eye out for those and send crew members to those as they're available. And, you know, just for your quick education, some of the things that we need training in various staff members, you know, I need engineering continuing education credits. We all need first aid, CPR, AED training. Most of the crew is required to have confined space entry training. We've got about half of the crew certified in line clearance street trimming. We all need bucket truck training. We've got a number of people with water distribution licenses. We need to have those and we're encouraging a couple of other crew members to pursue those. We're required to do illicit discharge detection training. That's a stormwater quality issue. We need to have pesticide and herbicide application certified people on staff, you know, so there's a lot of things that we need to keep the guys up to speed on. Another departmental effort is kind of an increase in what I'm calling operational readiness. We've, due to budget restraints, have let, budget restraints and changing regulations have let our supplies of some items get kind of thin. We got caught with a number of water supply fittings on hand and it's very nice to have them on hand so that whenever something comes up, you can just go to your shelf and pick things off of it, but the rules changed and we can no longer use them because they had a little bit too much lead in them. So, so with, you know, that experience, we went into kind of a on-demand supply sort of mode and with the amount of growth that we're having right now, that's becoming a little bit problematic. So, looking at stocking more water supply parts, more signed parts, and so that we can more quickly respond to various things. And also, along with that effort, is working on having pre, basically pre-bid predetermined suppliers of frequently needed items and some pre-bid predetermined subcontractors for various services so that when, when an issue comes up, we can just call this person who's already been through, you know, the vetting and the competitive process and get to those repairs faster. Also, along the, in the, in the equipment category, similar to Carla and her roof bond, the DPW now for the first time has a, an equipment loan payment to make every year. So, we purchased our Vector truck with a loan payment, so that's, that'll be continuing for the next four years. And for the first time, I think, since I've been DPW director, the proposed budget contains a tree planting budget. So, I'm kind of happy about that one. So, those are the highlights for the FY '19 budget. I don't know if you want to do questions or you want me to go into those memos or...
We'll go over the memos. Yeah, and then we'll take questions at the same time.
Sure. Yeah, we can look at the, the street repair cost estimates. As the mayor stated, he sent an email looking for some cost estimates on a couple of street projects. I think, at least the way I took the memo or the email, was projects that we could implement quickly and, and have a, sort of a significant impact on the motoring public. And so, in order to do those kind of projects, they have to be fairly simple mill and fills that don't require significant design effort and don't require investigation of any geotechnical issues or utility issues or don't have known utility issues. And that really narrows, narrows the candidates pretty quickly. Many of our streets are in need of a reconstruct where we don't just replace the asphalt. We replace or add aggregate below the asphalt and then address subsurface drainage. And then a number of them also have utility issues underneath that need to be addressed. Either the water main is approaching end of life, there are sanitary sewer problems, there are gaps in the storm sewer that, you know, are creating sinkholes, issues like that. So, I think in the, in the straight-up mill and fill category, my primary candidates would be Kevlin Drive and South Ann Arbor. Kevlin Drive, the only utilities that are underneath it are storm, the water and sanitary are actually in the green belt there. It's a short stretch, but it's a heavily traveled stretch. There's a significant traffic load there and the cost estimate for milling and filling that is $66,000. South Ann Arbor was repaved in 2002, I believe. A significant portion of the pavement is still in good shape, but there are some very deteriorated sections. So, there's two South Ann Arbor proposals here. One is a full mill and fill from Henry to Pleasant Ridge. That takes in, and then a little bit south of Pleasant Ridge. That takes in the section where the significantly deteriorated asphalt is, but replaces all of the asphalt. The second option there is a more focused mill and fill, similar to what we did on Bennett Street. Replace the significantly deteriorated sections and preserve the good asphalt and, you know, wait for a future date to replace the whole amount. So, $63,000 for the focused, $111,000 for that entire block. And then just for reference, kind of, some of the mayor's thoughts were Russell Street and Mills. And both of those streets have utility issues that need to be investigated. Mills has some known storm sewer issues and an area where we actually, we need to extend storm sewers. And then Russell has some suspect sanitary things we need to do study, get televised, review those, and do a full design of those. And portions of Russell also need to be reconstructed versus mill and fill. Now, mill and fill certainly, even on a road that is a reconstruct candidate, when the surface becomes significantly deteriorated, mill and fill is a good way to, reasonably inexpensive way to address that ride quality and, you know, push off the need to reconstruct for a certain number of years. Top on this memo is my opinion of the project that is, it's in the CIP at a significantly lower cost than this right now, a project that probably will benefit greatly by being moved up and changed to a reconstruct. And that's Woodland in front of the rec center and then down through the curve. It's, it's in the CIP as a, basically a full-depth mill and fill, removing the pavement and replacing the pavement. But this is one where I believe we need to do some investigation, do some design work, determine the cause of the failure there because that road failed faster than it should have. And then another benefit of moving that up, this is, I don't think this is 100% confirmed yet, but I believe next summer, the county is going to be constructing a roundabout at Woodland and Textile. They've done survey work this year and are beginning to design and they have a safety grant for that. I don't know that the safety grant fully funds the project though, so there's, there's some meetings that need to take place on that yet and I know they're seeking co-op or contribution from the city. But reconstructing Woodland at the same time that the roundabout is being constructed, I think, would be very beneficial and it would limit the, the number of times that the rec center is impacted by access problems. That's an expensive project, $863,000. So, so those, you know, these, basically just food for thought on, on street funding issues. And then a few meetings ago, we talked about the FY '18 bucket truck and how the one that we specified and placed a purchase order and was constructed did not meet the specifications of our, of our purchase order, so that order was canceled. At that time, given the amount of time left in FY '18, I didn't believe we could solve that problem in FY '18. But my chief mechanic didn't give up on that concept and he, he found a very nice unit that was already in, in, under construction. One of the MyDeal contractors, Altech, had luckily decided to build a speculative unit. It's a very common set of features used by many tree companies and utilities, so they just started to build one. And we had them bring out a demonstration unit with the same lift mechanism and same body, the different chassis than what's under construction, but we tested that out. It's great. It's a great truck, much... Much, much, much better than the, the other one that, you know, didn't meet our specification. This one is a new lift mechanism on a new chassis. So that's one of the cost downsides of, of this company is they do not work with used So the cost is $154,477. And within the FY18 budget, we have the $110,000 that was in the first equipment amendment for the, the bucket truck. The second equipment amendment included $30,000 for fuel system upgrades. We've, we spent a fair amount of time researching that to come up with that dollar figure, but as we got deeper into the details of it, it became clear that we weren't going to be able to pull that off in FY18. There were too many, too many codes, too many design considerations to, to figure that all out and get that completed this fiscal year so that those funds are available for this. And then the multiple other pieces of equipment that were approved in the Second Amendment and some in the original came in a little bit under budget here, a little bit under budget there, and it added up to about $15,000. So in current FY18 equipment funds, we have enough money to cover this, this other bucket truck.
Anything else, Mr. Fortes?
That is it.
Well, real quick, let me comment on your memo of April 30 regarding street repair and cost estimates, just to, for the benefit of my council colleagues. The genesis for asking for this document and analysis stems from action that council took, I believe during the construction season of 2014, where we added a mill and fill along South Lewis to our construction projects during that, that season. And as some of you will recall, that was a, that's one, actually receives or actually gets a significant amount of traffic. It's in a location that, that generates high visibility. It was in a very deteriorated state and I was, and, and I still am pleasantly surprised how well that mill and fill has held up.
Yep.
That looks great. Second, I can't tell you how pleased, Mr. Fortes, I was with how well the patching that was done along Bennett Street this past fall has persevered subsequent to winter. I think that, that project was, was excellent and will definitely prolong the, the life of Bennett Street. So I thought, considering the amount of money we have in our other side fund balance, that potentially we could add some, some, or some mill and fill projects and or patching to this construction season, in this intra-period between now and when we generate or establish a more reliable funding stream to meet our, our infrastructure needs. So, Mr. Fortes, I appreciate that, that analysis, and soon we will, or not soon, we will talk about it later this evening. With that, Councilman Mitchell, I'm going to begin with you. If you have questions from Mr. Fortes regarding either his two supplemental memos or his presentation, we would be delighted to hear those.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't think I have any questions about the bucket truck. Kind of excited about that one. Regarding the street repair, can you please clarify? One of the things I heard is that the mill and fill for South Ann Arbor would be either the $111,000 or the $63,000, is that right? Like, there's no total here?
No, that's, pick one.
So what are we, how much do we have to distribute? I just, I couldn't capture that, like, what guideline are we using to make this decision as far as?
Know it.
So, per the mayor's email, he says, I understand, he was saying possibly in addition to spending, using some of the, about, you know, so, amounts for, for OPEB and pension, take some of that for the street or streets.
Okay. It was, was it like two or four weeks ago?
Yeah.
Right, okay, all right. I just, a lot of stuff's happened since then. Okay, so.
And can I, real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
Per that request of, in addition to making a contribution to OPEB and to our pension liability, it's perfectly, I mean, I would disagree with this, but council could say to go pound sand and that we're not going to do any additional construction projects this year. It was just sort of food for thought.
Right.
And something to, to, to fill that void between now and when we establish a more consistent, reliable road system.
I mean, I, I think I've heard pretty soundly from citizens that roads are a priority. So for me, if we can, yay, roads. So I want to clarify, so South Ann Arbor Street actually fell walking to the cafe because there's like a couple little holes in the pavement. And there were people out there and I'm like, wow, if only we could get, but because it's a significant pedestrian area in that block between Henry and 12, there are holes in the, what we're supposed to use, the crosswalk by Salt, there's some holes in the actual crosswalk. And so I'm thinking about when we have Summer Music Series and we have people, you know, how does, is that something that we could, could look at? Or when, you know, does it need to be patched? I don't know what needs to happen, but I'm just concerned about safety.
Right.
Somewhat personally, but also for, for people who, when that street's closed off. So when you're talking about South Ann Arbor, you're, it looks like you're talking about...
Not that block.
Not that block.
This is Henry to Pleasant Ridge is what these estimates are.
It's not on the Christmas list at this time, is it? Okay.
So, I mean, in terms of, if you were to repave the 100 block, I think that would be more, more of an aesthetic choice than a
Than a?
Road choice. The, the pavement there has a lot of life in it. There are some holes.
Yeah.
There are, so there's, there's some smaller patching that's necessary there.
Oh, okay. So that would be a good...
But I don't think a, a full-scale resurfacing of it would make sense.
Right.
It'd look nice. It really would.
Totally.
And, you know, along with all the new...
Well, and when we're talking about, you know, aesthetic-wise, it, it's an area that's used, so I, I respect that. I, I don't know, I'm in support of spending money on roads. That was the third thing that I was thinking of, debt, retirement, and roads, is what I'm hearing from citizens, is that mostly roads because they don't, and then debt. And then they kind of don't understand about retirement or pay attention to it, so that's just me. But certainly road spending, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I don't know, from this information, I don't know how to prioritize, and maybe some of my council members will have a better answer for that. So I'll leave that for them. Can I please ask a couple questions about budget? So, can you, all right, so I'm looking at your budget, Department of Public Works, and you have some line items, like there, there's furniture, equipment under $5,000. And that was pretty low in 2016. It was, you know, pretty much $2,300. It jumped in 2017 to, to $12,200. And then this year, your proposed is $10,600. Can you talk about those peaks and valleys and what?
So it's, mostly it's an accounting issue.
Fun.
So we have an equipment under $5,000 budget and then we have an equipment over $5,000 budget. So in some years, we need to purchase a fair amount of small equipment. So we need chainsaws or weed whips or, you know, push mowers, items like that. They go into that under $5,000 budget.
I see.
So it's just, it's a, it's a varying, it's a varying need. And so, you know, in this, in FY18, in that amendment, there was, I think, $8,000 worth of small equipment.
Right, like the ear, the ear protectors and...
Yeah. Well, so that was one specific one.
Okay.
You know, so how that one's going to go, because it's a bunch of things that add up to $8,000, so I'm not sure where that'll actually end up, which line that'll end up in. But there were some leaf blowers, chainsaws, and a pavement saw, and there was another item in there that, you know, each individual one of those is under $5,000, so.
I'm, I'm familiar with that concept, but I was just wondering, so because we did, we front-loaded some of those expenses onto the 2017, 2018.
Yeah.
But we have a, a fairly significant, you're anticipating needing that kind of an increase still in 2016, over 2016?
Yeah.
For under $5,000?
Oops.
Do you want a number? I can get you a number.
It's the second line on page 15.
Yep.
441-928-000.
So I don't, I'm not certain if that $10,600 figure is reflective of the FY18 amendment or not.
Oh, that's a good point. My number is old. Did that change?
What number do you have?
So...
You have the same number.
$10,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But also, we have some furniture needs. You know, I, I need a new desk chair because about once a day, it drops me 12 inches unexpectedly and it's...
That sounds uncomfortable.
Yeah. Little camera.
You're right. We, we want a blooper reel of that and then we'll approve it. Just kidding. That was mean, that's not true. I did not mean that. That was satire, okay? Or, or like the, the operation supplies, you know, so I just, like that little chunk of line items, you know, furniture, equipment under 5,000, supplies, operation, cleaning of uniforms.
Yeah.
All of those went up, so can you talk a little, I think you said professional services is going to be kind of emergency?
That, that professional service is in the street budgets.
Oh, I see.
Local and major street budgets, not in public works.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay.
So...
Because that's kind of a jump.
Yeah. Let me, which?
Okay.
Give me one line item.
One, all right. So for example, supplies, operation. It's 441-751-000.
Okay.
That's page 15, line 3.
Thank you, Janet.
I'm sure I have a specific thing for that. I don't have that note with me.
Okay.
.........
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So, yeah, so our traffic control equipment, the various barricades, a lot of them are very worn out. Their reflective material is no longer up to standards.
I think I saw that. Okay.
So, that's, that's the big jump there, is we need to buy a number of, of new barricades.
And as far as safety supplies, like that had a jump, professional services in that particular bucket went up.
The safety supplies increase there is also kind of along the lines with the training that I spoke about earlier. An increased focus on making sure that our employees have the right training and the right equipment. And safety supplies is not always anything fancy. Sometimes it's just gloves, you know? So it's safety glasses, gloves.
Right.
Our gas monitoring equipment, well, actually, that goes in the water and sewer fund, but, you know, so that it's, it's part of an effort to limit liability and increase worker safety.
Right. And I, I guess I'm just still conscious of, our focus was growth in the staff and, and where else can we be responsible so that we can throw money towards roads? And I had a conversation with Ms. Bennett the other day that was funny. She's like, you guys always pick on like the little, you know, $5,000. It's because, like, we're, we're like, maybe if we do that enough times, maybe we could get another, you know, mill and resurface of something. So I, I'm, I'm just conscious that, you know, again, our focus was on a staff member and that our priority, you know, our debts and roads and retirement. I'll just say that. I'm going to be a broken record about that. But I don't think I have any other specific questions right now.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Portet Tarve?
Yes. Well, my first assistant?
No.
No.
The light seems a little dim at the base, Joe.
Oh, that could just be reflecting me. Okay. So, so my first question is, is it feasible to put the purchase of your new chair into fiscal year 18 and wait until next year?
It may be. You know, we're, we're getting towards the end of the year and we're looking at what funds are left.
I think I'm, I could be... I, I suspect my colleagues would support my, my view that it might be good to move that out.
It's usually a fairly soft landing, so it's not, it's not that bad. It's just more surprising than anything.
Way too low.
Yeah.
All right. So, let's see. So you mentioned the, the equipment investment, equipment that, some of which was able to be moved into fiscal year 18. So, and is that all moving forward in the way that you had hoped?
Uh, yeah.
Just as an update question?
It's, yes, it's moving forward very well. There's still a couple of question marks on items that we have placed the order for and, you know, the anticipated delivery date is, you know, June 29th. So there's two pieces of equipment that are, you know, they're going to be on the edge there. But overall, it's gone, it's gone very well. There's still the, the hearing protection headsets, we're still working on finalizing specifications for that and getting those ordered, the smaller pieces of equipment that I mentioned, the chainsaws and leaf blowers. Those haven't been acquired yet, but those are pretty simple. And the pavement saw has not been, but I don't think that's going to be a challenge at all. But everything else has been ordered and a good deal that we already have in hand.
Okay, great. That's great news. Thank you. So about the additional crew member, I have made the assumption all along, when you talk about additional crew member, what this does for you is let you be, all be spread less thin as opposed to having plans for, like, new things to be done. Is that, is that correct? Or do you have, so what are your plans for the new crew member, is, I guess is my, really my question?
It's, it's, it really is just kind of a, you know, person, our game. You know, we've got this much work to do and we have this many people, now we're going to have this many people, you know? So it's, it'll allow us to be less thin.
Okay, okay. That was, that was my assumption, but I just wanted to make sure. I'm, I would just say, hooray for tree planting. That's a, that's great news. And, oh, so, yes, I wanted to ask, you mentioned a possible roundabout at Textile and Woodland? Am I picturing, this is the T intersection? Okay. North of the rec center.
Correct.
Okay.
It's part of the jurisdiction of the road commission.
Right, right. I'm just trying to imagine. It's not really my responsibility, I'm just wondering about that as a, as a roundabout, as a candidate for roundabout. But, you know, who are we to question the road commission, except for every day?
I think the, the primary considerations were sightline issues and there's a crash and fatality history there.
Okay, yeah. I don't, I don't drive at that intersection, so, I mean, well, I usually just pass down textile. So, yeah.
At that time, I think we'll get, or, at least so you all know.
Yours is not working. No.
It's not working?
So, anyway, is that any better? There, there, there we go. Okay. I know Chris is working on the other one in the back.
It's going in and out.
Anyway, so I'll just talk really loud. So just as an FYI, I was contacted by the county. So just as an FYI, I was contacted by the county last week, I think it was last week if not late week before. Again, they would like to see, they requested that the city share in that cost. And I said, "Well, my recommendation would be if the county wants to do this, then the county should," I said, "We don't have dollars to maintain what we have." Have, it'd be around, he thinks, he gave me an estimate around $60,000. And I said, you know, "We don't have the dollars to maintain what we have." And so now you're coming to us, potentially coming to us asking for basically $60,000, $70,000 to put this in, and we didn't request. So I said, "So he should, I informed him, he suggested he sent a letter or request to the council, to the mayor and the council through me that, so once I get that out..." The county made some of that, and it doesn't consider that a fiscal responsibility. The fiscal responsibility, he said, "We don't have the dollars, we have the knowledge to do that." And I said, "Not that." He took one or several... Road mileage and put it towards, towards trails. And so he kind of, he, he kind of, kind of silent at that point for a couple of seconds. So...
Oh, yeah, thanks. That's, we'll come back to that, I'm sure.
Just to clarify, the reconstruct figure in, in that memo stops short of the roundabout. It doesn't go, it doesn't actually go all the way to textile. It goes to where we estimated the roundabout approach would be, so...
Right. Thanks. That's, that's what I understood. I was just stuck on the, on the idea of the roundabout. And I also would support the bucket truck and kudos to your chief mechanic for being persistent about it.
Thank you, Mayor Potemtahar. Tell us over here, Mark.
Yeah, I just have a few questions and just clarifications. We keep talking about the county road funding projects. What's our next priority for those funding? Can that money be potentially used for the $800,000 reconstructive woodland drive?
I'm not sure where we've...
Seems like every year we have to come up with a project in which we submit to get those funds.
Right.
So I don't know where we are next in the two.
Right now, it's here, Mark, in local streets.
Local streets.
We've got, quite a few local street projects in the city.
Okay.
And we match them up with those over the next four years.
Okay. Yeah, and I wasn't sure how that played out because...
It's not, yeah, so, I mean, like, so each year we have to save a project for a fund, so we could use, we're only about 170, you know, 8,000, so we're getting instead of the numbers, so...
Well, I didn't know if we could tie that in with some federal money because we're using federal money to redo industrial. So trying to figure out that scheduling for that big project.
That stretch of woodland is not part of the national functional classification system, so that's one of the reasons.
Change it?
Well, that's actually...
It's a truck route.
Yeah. That is something that Gary and I talked about briefly just today is, you know, would it be possible to get that on the national highway system? So that's something we're planning on looking at. See, we got to see what the current classification of textile is. And then I think depending on that, we can make a reasonable argument to reclassify that stretch.
Yeah, I did know because the idea that finally textile is going to be paved all the way to Platte from state, so going forward, that might make it more advantageous to go that route. When you talked about inventory, and I like your ideas about going forward with the contracts and preferred vendors and so forth, which raises a question for me. As you mentioned, we have to do all this training and so forth. At what point does it become more practical for us to be able to hire those services done than to have to have someone trained? I can understand where some of those things are done on a regular basis, but as we get into tree trimming and some of those aspects, we, you know, like utilities hire a company and all those other things. I do understand there are some needs for minor things during emergencies, whatever, but on a ongoing scale, just what the trade-off would be on that in terms of, you know, prioritizing projects? And that's just a statement. What I do want to know is, I know you want to add an additional position, but I keep continually wanting to have an overall assessment because if we're working smarter and you're looking at lean initiatives and all of those activities, adding new staff isn't necessarily the solution. The solution's to trying to figure out how to better work and organize. And so one of my concerns is the administrative oversight approach. And even though we may be adding another staff person, I'm not, or a TPW individual, I'm not sure that's helping resolve all of the issues that you're facing. Because as we're getting more and more projects, more and more things that are coming onboard, again, this is where I keep pushing back to, I want to see us do our leadership review. I want to have an organizational study before I'm really committing to a lot of new positions. And in this situation, I understand what you're trying to do, but again, I don't understand exactly all of our work that we're doing. And it seems like we have bought on a lot of equipment to attempt to try and do things and then that equipment sets aside because we can't get to it because we may not have the expertise. And it just seems like things keep, are great ideas, they just don't even seem to be going through fruition. The other one, we talked about some of the damage done to the streets when utilities come through and rip it up. How do we address that to make sure that, you know, we'll have something done, like a brand-new Michigan Avenue done. And Zal will come in here and then they'll cut a huge swath into it. And it looks like they did the easiest, cheapest patch to put in there to fix it. How do we react to that and how do we get them to really fix it to the degree of what was there?
Yeah. So DTE, I don't think there's any way to, you know, prevent them from, from doing those cuts for gas and electric repairs. But they do, they tend to, they'll do a quick patch, as you noted, and then bundle them together in a contract for a more appropriate permanent repair. And often that's a long timeline. So it's, you know, it's, I think it's really just a matter of bird dogging them and making sure that they know that there's a repair that, that needs to be completed. And I know a couple of staff members have contacted them on the one on Maple.
Yeah.
And I think that's kind of, there's a little bit of conflict about that because their valve had been paved over, you know, so that's why they had to make the hole to find that valve when we had the, the gas leak on Maple. So they're not all straightforward, you know, as to what the path towards resolution is, but most of them are.
Because even I've seen where we had on Maple in front of the post office where all of a sudden they put that one patch in there and it's, it's there, but it, it's always going to crack and break up and no matter what because it was not sealed in with the original. And I know you never can fix that because of that type of...
Yeah. And every cut, you know, creates another joint and, you know, those are an avenue for water to get in. But certainly that, you know, the patch at the post office, you know, would be another example of a small repair that could make a significant difference to people. However, Maple is, you know, we've got another application in for federal funding to repave that. So it's, you know, there's always this question of, you know, how much do you want to do in short-term fixes on something that you're anticipating a long-term fix is, is, you know, very close by?
And that's kind of the question I had in addition to the roads that you've identified. Are there other roads that are in much worse shape than some of these? These are all highly visible, visible and highly trafficked. We have some that, you know, potentially haven't been done and they don't have utility issues and things that are just basically going through a minefield when you're driving through them.
So most of those would be local roads. And so there are some local streets that are, you know, pretty much from end to end in very poor condition. They currently maybe ride okay, but they're just, you know, one bad winter away from, from being a minefield, as you say. So, you know, Maripool, Woodhill, those are all aged, very deteriorated, but they, for the most part, ride okay right now. There's, you know, roads within Northview that are in fairly bad shape. You know, they're scattered, you know, there's certainly portions of Russell and McKay, North Lewis, you know, there are, there's plenty of bad pavement available.
Well, and that's what I'm wondering.
But, but most of them do require some additional investigation, either into utility issues underneath. Highland is an example, you know, Highland, most of the pavement on that is pretty much shot. But, you know, we need to do a water main replacement. We need to do sanitary replacement. And we've got a kind of a sticky storm sewer issue there that we need to figure out, design a solution for and add into that project. So it, you know, that's, it's, we don't need to change the alignment of the road, you know, we don't need to change the grade of it, you know, there's no pavement issues that stop us from doing a quick repave of it, but there's a lot of stuff underneath it right now that needs a lot of work.
Right. And those are the kind of projects where I know it looks good to do some little patches and fixes and certain carieses, but we're just keep continuing to push off some of these bigger projects, even like a Highland. And I don't know when that's going to be addressed. And if it's been 40 years since that street's been done, I can see why neighbors and taxpayers get a little upset when we keep putting money into other things. And I do understand that we have a lot of traffic coming in and out, but...
Yeah. And there's more money available. There's, I mean, there is the federal money available on those select major streets.
And that's kind of where I'd rather see us focusing more on the federal money than spending this. But I think some of these could be done. I mean, the one on South Ann Arbor Street, I would go with the mill and fill. I don't, and in those one sections, redoing that whole street when we know potentially there's other money available, even considering maybe the county and such. My bigger concern, as you have mentioned, is that on South Ann Arbor Street, I think there's a bigger problem underneath that road than just mill and fill in it. And we may solve the problem for five years, but it could fail even worse. Then last thing, there's a couple of things. When you mentioned streetlights and so forth, we've replaced all the lights on Michigan Avenue, but there's still lights like at the corner, at the intersection of Lewis and that's like an overhead sodium, not a sodium, but a mercury vapor. There's one at the fire station when you turn into the street there. There's a couple poles. Why are those lights still there? Is it required by MDOT or did we just never take them down and replace them?
When, when Michigan Avenue was redesigned, reconstructed, the lighting plan and levels were looked at. And it was felt at that time that certain intersections needed a little bit of additional light. So, and they should all be LEDs unless they're the span wire ones.
The span wire ones.
Okay. So the span wire ones are nice because they are right in the middle of the intersection. And at that time, DT did not have a hanging LED fixture available. I'm not sure they still do at this time. So, so that was looked at in relation to the extended decorative lighting plan. That lighting was considered more of a pedestrian scale lighting rather than roadway lighting. So at those intersections, we opted to keep the overhead lighting.
I just looked at potential of cutting more and saving more. So, okay. Thank you.
Tell us one more.
Okay. So while starting the budget, just a couple of things that I'm not 100% sure about fringe benefits.
Which cost center?
Okay. It's TPW.
Okay.
So it's 814, like second line.
Okay.
It's actually a little bit of a... Everybody from Lakeview, Jeff's, you know, and that's because we have started taking all of the time off for the different cost centers. So Jeff's employees work in TPW, they work in water, they work in sewer, they work in cemetery, they work in parks, they work in motor pool. He has about 35 different cost centers. And we've voiced the concern with the way to, when they take time off, do you spread, where they could have worked, or where do you spread and where does the cost add? And, you know, that fringe benefit is the, you know, their, their cost of the benefits associated with the time work. What we've decided to do in the past budget and this budget is to report time off of the reports of cost of the operation of the TPW because of what TPW employs. So that's increased, you can see some of the smaller cost centers throughout the budget have decreased. So the 705 line item would increase, which is hit a solid application sick personnel from TPW. You can see that that increased and this fringe benefit because of the costs associated with that time off is also being absorbed under that line. Okay. So that answers to, thank you very much. Now, the last one is what is fringe community events? Because that was originally proposed as a zero now to 400. Fringe community events are the costs associated with the time that they are working at the community events. So even, that would be, we take the total cost of all the employees and all their benefits and distribute it to the cost number where they actually work. So there's costs associated with fringe, with community event, and we do that just so we can allocate the time. Their health insurance, their retirement. I can't tell you why the original one didn't have anything on it.
Yeah.
So you're basically just cleaning up the allocations.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm waiting to see if I have a question to probably do. All of those, you say professional services and so on, is that not legal for you or what is exactly professional service? That's a job.
That's it, yeah.
It's not legal services. It's not legally...
No.
There is a professional services league. Okay.
So within the public works budget, professional services would be overhead door repair, the vehicle lift, maintenance and repairs.
Okay. Okay. So I think that's about all I have stuck up here. Now, your bucket truck, I'm very excited for you. As I've used to very before, as you will, you are creatively creative. You always find a way to profit the exact dollars. So, Dave, about...
I have a lot of people helping me with that.
Yeah. Now, on your roads, I just need to, I think we should hear about, first, ask, and I'll just sort of piggyback to that, about, do you keep your running for the paper? Like, I guess what I'm trying to figure out, like, if you were to look on local streets on this one. The last one is Austin Road, my little head-end Austin Road. If you get pushed out, if this avenue's over the amount, I mean, it's, it's in sad shape, but I can't even imagine that road going another five years of course even up in consideration.
Yeah. So it's in the, in the poor category in the Paser ratings for sure. And, yeah, so, I mean, like I said, there are no shortage of, of roads that need repair. That one, I can't specifically comment on whether there's a, a utility issue that needs investigation there or if that is simply just a paving issue. I do, the back of my mind, I think there's, there's some water main work that needs to be done there. But, and so that, I mean, kind of gets back to the discussion we had about road funding. One of the features of whatever road funding mechanism we come up with that I hope to have is a predictability to it so that we can know that three years from now, we will have, you know, give or take, this much money available for roads so that we can do these plans, you know, so we can begin the utility investigations and, you know, do the pavement profile design and know that when we get to the, you know, time to bid, we're going to be able to bid it and, and do the project. Trying to select streets in this kind of, this fashion while, you know, addressing significant pavement surface problems that have come up is important. The, the long-term planning is, is, is the way to, you know, get all of these issues addressed. So, you know, again, Austin Road, I don't know. I don't know if there's a utility issue under there or not at the moment, but I suspect there is.
So we talked about three years ago.
Yeah.
But I guess, you know, and I don't want to impersonate so why that, you know, that's just one of the, sort of, like I said, that I know well, there was many other ones, so...
Yep.
On a road like that, I mean, I don't know anything about roads, but I have to say that my uneducated opinion, if you were to put up a sign that says no truck traffic, it would help that road considerably. Because I think a big chunk of that road that's coming up is in car lanes. And they're definitely keeping that facility stuffed on the car. So, okay, now going back on top of mill and fill. So are mill and fills something you're going to do or is that something like if you're patching equipment or is that still a contract?
These would be contracted. Yeah. So these are large enough that they require a paving machine to get a, a good smooth product.
So, but then on this chart, this is a full rebuild, correct? I'm trying to figure out the difference between the... I'm trying to figure out the difference between the mills on this one and the mills on this one. It seems to be quite a costly.
So the mills that's in the CIP is not the full length of the road. It's basically the northern half.
Right.
Yeah. So the southern half was reconstructed fairly recently. I don't recall the date. So this would be the, the northern half that's in the CIP. The cost that's in this memo is resurfacing the entire stretch.
See, because I travel mills numerous times a day, and I have to tell you, it's in really, really bad shape, and not just by the new development. I mean, now by the hospital, it's really beat up. And is that from truck traffic? I know, because you keep saying that is that the lower part getting done, but it's in really bad condition, I have to tell you. I mean, not all the way down to the guy who's doing, so, the damage.
Yeah. Yeah. Again, I mean, roads.
I guess I'm trying to figure out, you know, what options we have for some of these streets that are, that are, you know, is a mill, how long does a mill and fill last?
It depends. There's no real straight-up answer to that. I mean, I think you can expect a minimum of five years, and if you get ten years out of it, you've done pretty well. But it depends on what you're going over. So if you're mill and filling a road that really needs to reconstruct, you're going to be in that five-year range. If you're mill and filling a road that has a solid base, has good subsurface drainage, then you could get fifteen, twenty years out of that surface. You know, you just kind of reset the clock and begin the asphalt aging process again.
So do you, for example, or like, how do you know that? Like, you have to decide whether you have to, what was the answer?
No, some of it's history, but when we do our, you know, our standard full design and planning process, we do cores, down about four or five feet. So we see what the existing asphalt thickness is, what the existing base is, and what are the, the natural conditions of the soil underneath that road. And then design the pavement profile to, to deal with the natural soil conditions.
So once again, going back to my question about trucks. I mean, are trucks really, or killing these roads? I mean, I can't believe the conditions made since the start building in those roads.
Trucks put more wear and tear on the road than cars do. But, you know, trucks support commerce and development, and, you know, they bring us our food and our, you know, everything, so they're a fact of life. And, you know, yes, you could say no trucks, but then you'd have no goods either, so.
So I guess the other thing too is that what's going to happen when they make, when they pave next time? Like, is that going to become a truck route? Where are the trucks going to end up?
That.
Do they divert some of our traffic, or is it just Michigan Avenue?
I don't see, you know, the paving between Platte and, and Michigan Avenue and State. I don't, I mean, I, I think that might possibly lighten some of the traffic on Michigan Avenue in town. I don't see it really having any other significant impact on us.
Or secondary.
I don't think so, no.
Now, as far as, you gave us two options for South Ann Arbor. I mean, are you in favor of tearing that road up that's in decent condition? Or, I mean, is it better to do the whole roadway versus a chunk?
I think that one, I, I would recommend the, the select mill and fill where we're just removing the, the most seriously deteriorated portions. So Mr. Gierba alluded to there being a, a deeper problem there. I suspect, just given the location and the alignment of it, that most of that deterioration has to do with the, the water main trench underneath it. Either it wasn't quite fully compacted, or there's maybe a subsurface drainage issue in there that's causing a little bit of a soft spot. But the, the vast majority of the deterioration there aligns with that trench. So there may be a subsurface condition there. I, so if it's a compaction issue, it's probably consolidated itself by now, and we could mill and fill those and get good service out of it. If it's a drainage issue, then that's an ongoing thing, and that would shorten the life of, of any mill and fill that we do there. So it's in very bad shape. I think it's bad enough that it warrants resurfacing, and, but, you know, those issues would be looked at when it's time to resurface the entire road.
My last question, Charles, is going to be sinkhole. Are we in a situation where we're going to sinkholes? This is a random, but.
You're talking about Bennett Street? Okay. Bennett Street was a random occurrence. It was a construction error when the water leads for two of those houses were installed. So that created a hole in the sanitary lead, or sanitary main, and then, you know, soil was moved away with the, the flow of sewage through there. So that's essentially a random occurrence. We do have other issues. We, I mean, we recently repaired a storm structure that had created a sinkhole. You know, basically, one of the, it was a brick structure in the side, and one of the bricks deteriorated and soil started moving through. So with aging infrastructure, underground infrastructure, those kind of issues are going to become more, more frequent. And that's why I was, you know, stressing on some of these roads, not doing mill and fills, so that we do have opportunity to review our televising and make plans to fix some of these underground issues.
Thank you very much.
Yes, most of my questions were asked already, but what's your chief mechanic's name?
Alex Link.
Thank you, Alex. Just want to give him a little bit of credit for that, because, awesome. The fringe benefit question about the public drains, I think that was probably answered the same kind of shifting around that's happening. Okay. And then what's happening with the landscaping along Michigan Avenue? Is that under your jurisdiction, the landscaping in the medians and stuff?
In the islands? Essentially, yes, but I believe we're working on a plan to have a volunteer take care of that.
Yeah. I just wondered if you could bring that up, just, I kind of know a little bit about it, but I wanted you to talk about it, because I think it's.
... Michigan Avenue. Okay. And Asian Home Service has, I'll add here, potentially command to move, like, anybody that's up, but so, the plantings that are now, are only, it's, so, DPW, they're just not doing, or, you know, have the resources to be, they're not, so, there is, we go back to, you know, right, this is not, they're making, they're making, issues on, on the day, and, um, and we, all, now, almost every place is, I'm, 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 I'm expecting, uh, we need them, uh, so, and then, we, partners, and then we're, uh, positioning, they stay in the, we have, we have, we have, that's our, that's our, that's our, that's our, additional support.
That's a significant amount of money though, right? From what I understand, Urban Main Street? It's like fifteen thousand dollars or something like that, that they, in, somewhere in there range? The charting that.
It should, we try to make, uh, money, uh, in that.
Okay. I do, I mean, I just think that that's, that's a good number to know, just because otherwise it's something that wouldn't be done. And then that, the tree planting budget kind of triggered that in my head. I appreciate that, that we're investing in that. I think that's important. I think the look and the environment of those things is valuable, so I appreciate that. As far as the roads, I guess I'm, I would be out of this list. The mill and fill on South Ann Arbor, I think, is, I believe, would be my first priority. My question about the woodland to textile, is there any, I guess we talked about this a little bit already, but the, the road, the effect of the trucks from the construction project on Legacy Heights and the construction project with MMI, is there any kind of?
I, yeah, I don't believe there's any avenue to, I don't know, pursue offsite that's a little bit outside of my expertise, but I, I don't believe there really is anything. And when Legacy Heights was under construction initially, I'm not exactly sure how we did it, but we did restrict Legacy Heights truck traffic and did not allow them on woodland. But then, once the primary infrastructure was in there and there was just individual houses being built, I, I think that restriction was removed at that point.
If that was any, if there was any issue with that and anything that could be done about that, I appreciate the looking into whether we could do something with federal roads, because I do think that that's where the trucks are going to come in and out of, being that industrial park is right there. And then, the sinkhole issue, we already brought that up, was one of my questions. And is there anything that, any of this money that could be taken and used to do the patching of some of the holes, the utility holes? Or is that all going to be coming from DTE as a separate contract later on? Just especially the one on the corner at Maple in Michigan Ave, it's getting pretty deep.
I mean, my understanding of this is that it's general fund, fund balance, so I believe it could be spent anywhere.
I just didn't know. I guess my question is whether that, is DTE responsible for fixing those ultimately? And they're going to be fixing it, but it could be four years from now, whenever they get around to getting enough, so they have to go and fix them all? Or is it our responsibility to fix them?
So, in general, it's their responsibility to fix them, and typically, it's less than a year. That particular one, I think there's some dispute about who's responsible for fixing that one, whether it be DTE or MDOT, so.
Okay. So it doesn't make sense to use general fund dollars to fix it just yet?
No.
Okay. I think that was it for me.
Mr. McCallum, Mr. Shiel.
Question, two statements. First of all, you mentioned buying the heavier truck, plow truck, salt truck, so on, and you may have to redo some of the routes. Do you have software to help you in that endeavor?
No.
Is there software that exists that would help you in that endeavor?
There is, and there's vehicle tracking systems that, you know, allow you to see where, where all the vehicles have been, and you can put that information up on, you know, on the internet and make it available to folks, so they can see, you know, when's the last time a plow truck hit my street? And I've looked at some of those in the past, and, and while I think they, they have a role, I don't think we're really ready for it. So we're in the process of launching a computerized work order and maintenance record system, you know, so when we get that under our belts, you know, then it would be time to look at the next, you know, system like that, you know, technological software or equipment package that might help us do something, so.
The other one, insofar as the street repairs go, I drive Kevlin almost every day. A lot of people do, I think, to avoid the, the traffic light there at the corner of Maple and Twelve, and the ensuing traffic that backs up when the light's red.
Yep.
That street's in terrible shape. Not only that, it gets a heck of a lot of traffic from people going in and out of Tim Hortons, because that's the only entrance there. The Tims is in through that street. So that is, that is really a terrible, terrible street. And then the last comment that I have is that I too give kudos to your, your increased money in the street planning budget, because I know one of the hottest topics at our annual association meeting this year was suggestion by your arborist, and I don't think it was inappropriate, that if we wanted to get trees replaced in a timely manner, we should probably do it ourselves as an association. And, because they were really pushing as much for aesthetics as they were for anything else, and is the councilperson sitting there in that meeting, it was a pretty hot seat for me for a while, trying to explain that, hey, you know, it's just common sense. If you want to get it done, the city doesn't have the money, maybe we need to spend a few bucks here.
Right. Yeah. And I mean, in the, the years where we did not have a, a tree planting budget, and, you know, we were removing street trees and not able to replace them, we did offer, you know, for folks who, you know, wanted a tree and didn't want to wait for an unknown length of time, you know, that they would purchase it, purchase it, we'd go pick it up and plant it. And, you know, so we hit, we were continuing the labor side of, of tree planting.
I thought that was a very generous offer, but thank you for whatever relief that might show us in the future.
Mr. Forrest, just a couple things. I want to revisit, because it has been in priority of mine. In fact, I, I mentioned it in my January state of the city address, adding additional personnel at the Department of Public Works. And while I fully agree with Mr. Gierba's assessment that an organizational review and assessment of the entire city would be of a profound benefit, in my mind, there's absolutely no doubt that adding someone to the front line is beneficial. You mentioned that more than a decade ago, excluding yourself, your position, and the office manager's position, we had sixteen, sixteen, both under yours.
Correct.
And if this budget were to be adopted in its current form, we would be adding one, which would bring us up to thirteen. Is that correct?
Correct.
While at the same time, I think it's undeniable that the amount of assets we have to maintain and care for have increased, and will continue to increase in the ensuing years if our, if our trajectory continues. So I think that's really, really important, that, that we add that position to our, our front lines in this next fiscal year. And as I stated, I believe, in January, if we're sincere about maintaining our assets, we have to have people on the front lines to do the day-to-day maintenance that's required. One additional question or comment regarding your memo of April thirtieth regarding street repairs. My initial inclination is to favor the select mill and fill on South Ann Arbor. I think you've touched on this, and a number of my colleagues touched on this as well. The troubled areas are where the topography drops, they're at sort of the entrance to, close to the entrance of, of People's Park, and where, South Ann Arbor intersection with Busker Drive.
Yeah.
And I would describe the deterioration very similar to what existed on Bennett Street last year prior to, to the patching again. I want to state it for the record that that, I don't remember, was that, that did the work at Bennett?
They were the general contractor, yes.
That, that, it's as close to perfect, I think, as you're going to get.
Yep.
In terms of select patching. So I would favor that and Kevlin Drive, although unless my colleagues object, I would like to revisit this issue, this specific issue of funding some additional infrastructure projects, as well as making some additional contributions to OPEB and our pension liability at our next meeting. I think it would be improper to develop consensus that you're just seeing this information for the first, first time this evening. And Mr. Forrest, tell me if this is a, a request that is not appropriate or too bonerous. There were comments made by a number of my colleagues about potentially sharpening your pencil a little bit more and taking a look at some additional streets that may benefit from a select patching or a mill and fill. Are there other streets or areas of town that could be added to this list?
Potentially. Certainly, you know, kind of that Bennett Street style, you know, where there's a couple of bad patches. I think there may be a few more candidates for that. Again, they may be, you know, shorter term, you know, get rid of a rough patch in an otherwise pretty decent street, you know, with the understanding that there may be, there may be a reason that rough patch is there that's not going to be addressed by the mill and fill, whether it's some subsurface condition or drainage or what. And, you know, that there's potentially a future underground utility project there. But I think in the, in the broad scope, I mean, the amount of money we spent on Bennett Street, I think it was, I don't know, twenty-five thousand dollars, something like that, you know, that, you know, that patch, I think, was well worth it, you know, and there's, there's probably some. know, and there's, there's probably some other candidates like that, that.
If you take a look in that paper report back to our next council meeting, which is a week from today, um, and, and here's the other, before I get to Mr. Girbod, here's the other important distinction that I would make, Mr. Flores, compared to the patching that was done on, on Bennett Street last year, and the patching that was done in-house by DPW on My Street Russell, maybe two or three years back, is that we began to see deterioration almost immediately.
Yep.
And what, what exists on Bennett Street has held up very nice.
Yep.
Um, subsequent to, to a pretty long, for that to picture.
Right, and I, two, I mean, two factors that, that play into that, one is paving equipment, that it, paving equipment does a good job of paving, um, and, uh, the thickness of that patch. Um, the, the Russell Street experience, um, was somewhat of a, a learning experience with that type, type of repair, uh, so we did it, uh, fairly significantly thicker on Bennett Street than we did on Russell.
Well, and to your earlier point, too, about mill and fill is a really beneficial approach, if you, if you're hitting that road in sort of a sweet spot.
Yep.
Where the top layer is starting to deteriorate, but you're not seeing that, that subsequent, uh, damage below the asphalt.
Right.
Mr. Girbod, do you have a counter question?
Just taking on to what you were mentioning, um, you know, we talked about, there's utility issues and everything with these different roads, should we be investing money in doing potential assessments, so you have that inventory, to understand what that is, so that we aren't doing it at every single individual street, to have it? Because it sounds like some of these are just historical problems that we know are there, but we don't know for sure.
Yeah, well, a, a lot of it's an ongoing process of, um, you know, we keep records of all of the, uh, water main breaks and any sinkholes that come up, so we kind of know their distribution and, and, um, and we also have the records on the age of, uh, the vast majority of the infrastructure. And addition to that, with the Saw Grant, we have televised a significant portion of the sanitary and, uh, storm sewer system. Um, that data is still being processed, um, and that's going to result in a, an asset management plan for the sanitary collection system and the stormwater collection system that will have, um, some specific projects in it, and, you know, just, uh, some recommended, uh, processes on how to keep this updated and, uh, make sure that, uh, we're not getting behind the eight ball again.
So this will answer some of these questions for these streets, once that Saw Grant's available, so.
Yeah.
We are, basically, you're saying we're doing it, it's already happening.
Mm-hmm.
It's part of Saw Grant.
Yep.
Okay, um, the only thing about the South, South Ann Arbor Street thing, again, I'm worried, I know you said that maybe it's compacted down, but there's always been a water problem right there at Pleasant Ridge, and that area where that street has failed, because we get heavy rains, it floods right there.
Hmm.
So I, I know that, what you mentioned, the drainage, so when we talk about a sixty-six thousand dollar, I'd rather spend a hundred thousand dollars and make sure that thing's fixed, so it don't have it fail, regardless of what we're doing.
Um, I mean, we do, we have some of the, uh, preliminary storm modeling results back from the, the Saw Grant process, so I could take a look at, at those in that area, um, and then back at the, uh, the design drawings for the last, um, repaving there, and see what, what kind of drainage facilities are there.
If we're going to do that in mill and fill it, this patch thing, I think that should be at least somewhat of a, we don't know when we're going to get additional money to do the whole South Ann Arbor Street, so.
So, Mr. Flores, a little bit of homework, if you look into that issue for Mr. Girbod and for, uh, councils, everyone on council's benefit, um, and then also, um, if there's the potential of, of adding some projects to this list, um, and what I would like to propose to my council colleagues is that we revisit this issue, uh, we'll probably touch briefly on OPEB liability, pension liability, and then the budget as a whole, um, at a more abbreviated work meeting before our next regular council meeting, and we do not have one currently scheduled. Um, and I'd also like to get, Councilwoman Mitchell unfortunately had to leave, and it was not a planned exit, um, and so I want to make sure that she's privy to, to the discussion and whatever consensus is ultimately developed. Uh, does anyone object to having a work meeting next Monday, six-thirty? Works? You can all blame me, because I was the one who made this request a, a week ago, and while, Mr. Flores, I appreciate the information, again, I, 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 I don't feel comfortable, uh, uh, making a formal decision, nor do I suspect my council colleagues would, would be inclined to do so either. Ms. Tahr?
Um, if, so, I, thank you, I, I'd just like to ask if, if your thought is that we would start to come to consensus about priorities, I would like to have, uh, the bigger picture about this, how much money we might potentially spend, and what other, the other priorities we have for fund balance, what those might be, so, I, I don't, I'm not, so what I'm saying is, I'm not comfortable saying, yeah, let's do this and this and this, if I don't know what the broader context is.
Okay, and I, I, I think that's, that's excellent, as we discussed, I think, at the initial budget meeting, um, and I think this would be Ms. Bennett's recommendation, she can correct me if I'm wrong, um, certainly it would be prudent and fiscally responsible to use some of that unsigned fund balance to, to make an additional contribution to OPEB and to our pension liability. So, did you understand Ms. Tahr's comment? Okay, you'll be able to, to address that next Monday? Okay, and then, of course, I also want to use next Monday, if there are any outstanding issues relating to the budget, they can be addressed at that time. Ms. Dillon?
Thank you.
To piggyback on what Mr. Tahr just said, um, where are we with strategic plan? Because I still feel like that needs to be integrated into our budget, if we've got a plan, how are we funding it? I just want to make sure that the two are cohesive.
So, uh, if you may, we're all communicating as we can, uh, that the plan is, uh, generally at seven, and, and, and consideration at the, at the.
Okay, so our budget will be in place, though, by that point?
First meeting in June, is, is when you, when the council has to adopt a budget.
If we're talking after our next work meeting.
I would like to have a.
So.
Have a basic consensus subsequent to our next work meeting and staff, you correct me, Colonel? Then that would mean, at our second meeting in May, we would schedule a public hearing, and then both at our first meeting in June, is that correct?
Correct.
Can you, so you have a, so, correct, Colonel, uh, to follow up on this Dillon's comments, you currently have a draft of the strategic plan?
Correct.
I think the earlier that gets sent out to council, the better, so an electronic version can be sent out maybe tomorrow, council members to begin to review.
Sure, what I've asked, um, actually, I didn't get a chance to send a reminder out to, to my team, but what I had asked last Wednesday was for my team to take a look, like we always do, take a look at what's been proposed, and make any comments, uh, for any considerations, so, um.
Let's do this, then, you want to give it until late tomorrow afternoon? And then see if we, let's make, let's have a committee to send that draft, again, there's a draft document, subject to change, probably most of it will remain intact, but give that to council maybe before the close of business call.
Uh, how about Wednesday?
That would be fine.
Okay.
That's what you can do, but to Wednesday.
Good.
Thank you.
Yep, my pleasure. Uh, Mr. Flores, anything else you'd like to add? You clear about the additional information we're requesting at our next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate your, your work. We are going to transition now to a, uh, brief discussion on the farmer's market. Uh, ladies, would you like to, to join us, maybe, yeah, chief, and, yeah.
No, no.
Yeah, Carla, why don't you, uh, I'll have you discuss your memo, uh, what is the data on that table, please, okay? Why don't you, we're going to hear from these ladies about farmer's market, and I expect, and then discussing that, uh, and then when we get to the, the other section.
I'll begin with you, and then we'll.
I'll open it up for any additional comments or considerations.
All right.
So again, uh, this, uh, these comments are going to be referencing some, uh, support material that was, uh, made part of your packet. Uh, ladies, again, please be sure to speed into the microphone, uh, the floor is yours. I started with, who did I start with last time? I started with Kristin Mitchell, Councilwoman Mitchell with a question, so would you ladies are down with your comments? I'll begin with Mr. Shiel and Edwina Forte-Tarra, I'm just going to excuse myself to use the rest of the floor is yours, yeah, absolutely.
Just really quickly, um, so this is, uh.
Your microphone is not on.
It's not working. Here.
Are you sure it's not working?
It's eight-four-three. Got to talk louder.
This is about as direct as it gets.
Yeah.
So.
Hello.
See? Careful what you wish for. So, uh, obviously, this is something new, we've not brought the farmer's market, uh, before council before, and, big reason is that this is the first year that significant, uh, proposed for significant subsidy, um, and, uh, Christine and her team will, will discuss that here in a moment, but, so, um, this has gone as a proposal to the EDC, um, and so this is, as usual, still through the EDC budget, however, you as council has, you have the ultimate authority to approve the EDC. It was working, Chris, after, it's presented to, to EDC, and, uh, then, the proposal is then presented to council to be approved, so you have ultimate authority, but we wanted to, because it's about an eighty-nine-hundred dollar, something like that, subsidy, um, so it's being proposed, and, and it's also a different, a different market now, and, and Christine will, will tell you why, but it's, it's staff different, it's, and it's, it's different competition, it's, it's all those things, I don't want to steal their thunder, but just to prepare you, and that's, that's why they're here today, so, um, unless anybody has any questions for me, I will turn over to Christine.
Hello? Hello? Um, I've brought with me today, um, to support me, if you have any questions that I can't answer, um, Martha Reed, who is, um, my co-manager that is heading out, um, and, um, again, thank you for everything that you've done, she has been my, um, person with the numbers and, and, um, accounting and everything, so, um, she wanted to be part of the, the meeting. And then, um, coming in is Jody Hilber, Hilber, did I say it right this time? Okay, um, and so she, she'll be, um, coming in and replacing, uh, uh, Martha, but Martha is not going too far, I'm not letting her go too far. Um, anyways, uh, so, yes, we, we looked at our budget this year, and even with cutting out, um, the Tuesday market, um, we, we put together a couple different le- levels of, of, uh, a budget for the market, um, with different things that we were, um, looking to get as far as activities and more cooking demos and, uh, music, and, um, um, those things were removed to come up with a budget that was very, um, slim and getting what we really needed to get done, um, for this year, um, and with, with a few, uh, additional, um, things, I guess, equipment things that haven't been addressed before. Uh, we've been kind of using our own tables, um, for a while, and we would like to actually buy tables that go along with the market, and, um, and we also put in the budget that, um, we would like to get, uh, a larger shed, if that, um, if that's available, um, I, I spoke to some DPW employees about the spacing for that, um, but, uh, because we have so much more equipment, so many more tents, um, signage, and, um, and totes of equipment now that we didn't have before, when the smaller little, um, closet kind of, uh, storage space was, was, uh, used. Um, we are definitely, um, I think you, you received a packet of information that, that shows, um, so many of our numbers and our attendance and our outreach, um, has been increasing since I took over the market, um, and with these young lovely ladies, I will, um, got a lot of, uh, stuff done, added a lot of items, um, we take credit card tokens now, which maybe some of you know, um, which has added, um, a lot of, well, not just that, um, but more food assistance as well, has added a lot to, um, what we keep track of on the backend, and, um, and working with the city staff even recently, to try to get that all ironed out, um, but it also takes a lot of work, um, to keep up with the competition in the area, um, both with, um, markets in the area, such as right down the street, um, on Thursdays with Pittsfield Farmer's Market, but also competing with, um, the markets to our, our west, um, who are all subsidized with, um, Chelsea Wellness Foundation, um, monies. Um, we are competing not just, am I out, still on? We are, we are, um, competing not just for customers, but also for vendors, um, we are constantly trying to, um, to weigh that and, and, and appeal to both ends, to make sure that we have the best market, um, in the area or, uh, for our community. The other, um, competition that we have is, there's more and more stores that are carrying local food and, um, and locally made items, um, including our, our own store, McPherson's Local here, that I love, and I, um, I adore Jen, that works there, but, um, three of my winter, um, market vendors decided to sell at her store instead of coming to the winter market, and, um, and even our farmer is selling for Argus Farm Stop, which, um, which is in Ann Arbor and just opened up a new location, so, um, they, they decided to sell there instead of selling at the winter market. So we are dealing with, um, a lot of competition. Uh, in, when I went to speak at the local food summit, um, in, at Washtenaw County, um, Community College, I, I brought up this, this situation, um, that we're having with, with markets nowadays, and can, and competing with all of the businesses that have local food and items, and how do we still, um, exist and, uh, be effective in our communities? Um, most of what we were talking about, and coming up with those, those, uh, answers, which there isn't really, but, i- is that we were, we were really kind of concentrating on the idea, or we thought the idea, that we, what you needed to concentrate on was what we can do for the community. This is a community event that people come out to, um, once a week, um, all year round, um, we only take off for, uh, major holidays if they happen to sit, to sit on one of our market days, and, um, and we service, uh, both, uh, eating healthy, um, and food products, um, food assistance, so we're helping to, uh, provide food assistance for low-income individuals so that they can eat healthy. We're also providing a, a social, um, uh, aspect for people to come out, and, especially since a, a large percentage of our, our customers are seniors, um, maybe for them to be able to come out, um, and have social experiences that they might not normally get, um, as they're in home. Uh, so, we applied for one grant and received it through Washtenaw County Public Health Department, um, as, as Carla did with, uh, the Rec Department, um, the Healthy, Building Healthy Communities Grant, and that money, um, you'll see represented in different ways on the budget, um, is to have, uh, well, we're calling the program Be Healthy Celine, and, uh, it will have cooking demos once a month, so to pay for the equipment and the staffing for that, that person, once a month, um, and also provide tokens for incentive to get, um, seniors and low-income individuals to participate in this program. The tokens, um, are, um, being, uh, reimbursed through the grant, and, um, and we're looking forward to adding this service to the community. But with all of these different things that we're doing, um, and getting involved in, and want to do more of to, um, support this community asset, um, we, we have added more to our, what we do and tasks that we do, which, um, you can see from another, I, I think it's also in your, in your packet, um, what our tasks are and how many hours per week that it worked out to be, um, and we've come up with approximately twenty hours a week in the past, um, you, as you can see, there's a large change in the wages that we're proposing this year, which is the majority of what we're asking for the city to support us for, um, and that is just to cover those extra hours. Last year, Martha and I did, uh, quite a bit of volunteering, um, and I knew that there was going to be some of that, I knew that there was a lot for me to, to, um, to start, to show, to, to show the community and, and the government that, um, what we could do with the market, and, um, and also some, like, learning curve for what, um, what it takes to run this market, and how to work with the, the community for what, what they needed. And so, um, so we did the best with what we had, and, um, and this year, we're just asking that we, we're not asking for an increase in pay per hour, but we're just asking for, um, to get paid, um, for the hours and the, the work that we do. Um, we are still going and looking out for sponsors, by the way, um, as well, um, we did receive seven hundred dollars worth of sponsors, um, last year, and all of those sponsors are going to continue to support this year, um, and we will be reaching, or we have been, um, we have a team, um- And we will be reaching, or we have been, we have a team that is dedicated to that. And we've been going out and trying to get more sponsors this year. But most of those sponsorships as, as we're advertising will be for the extra activities, the cooking demos, the, the music, the, the kids' activities, things like that, that we would like to add.
Excellent. Mr. Shu, can I start with you?
Yes, yeah. We received, or I come up with that dollar or that amount because I give out a survey to our customers every year. We received something over a hundred. And I ask them specific questions that go along with an online tool that they have for markets to use. It's called Market Share under Market Anthela. And the actual calculation, spreadsheets and everything is called SEED, Sticky Economic Impact Device. So anyways, you asked specifically, I think there's six different questions. You asked how often they come to the market, what they sell at the, or what they are going to buy at the market, how much, I mean, how much they're going to spend at local businesses and if the market was what brought them to the downtown area or that area that day. And when you put that in for all a hundred and seven spot, survey, the program spits out a report with that calculation. And I, I, I can send you the report that has all of the calculation information on it if you want. Okay. Yeah, yep. Yeah, it's a free tool that I, that I came across a couple of years ago. And I don't think it's perfect. I think that there, as I've found, MIFMA, Michigan Farmers Market Association is coming out with a new version that might be more specific to Michigan. I'm not sure what the changes are. But, but it's, so it's not perfect, but I think that for, especially for, for our, our use, I guess, and especially to compare for years to year, I think that it's okay for, for us to use at this time. As you can see in two thousand sixteen, it was forty, forty-one percent less. That is from, again, a survey that I did before I actually started running the markets because I wanted to have kind of a baseline number. I have an old, I'm sorry, I have an old budget in front of me and I didn't write that calculation because it got changed a few times. So I'm sorry. It's the very end, eight thousand, sorry. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shu. Councilwoman McCall?
The sponsorships that you've gotten in, you're using for specific items like the cooking demonstrations or?
Yeah, the ones I've, that, that we're planning on getting already, that we knew we were planning on getting, that we added into the budget. We're going to be, we're going to go towards specifically the equipment that we need to support those. Yeah. 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 Yes, specifically our, our bags. We're looking at that idea because we need to order new bags. You know how, I, I don't know, you know, how popular they are. We go through some, tons of them. And, and the customers love to bring them, but they also, if they forget theirs, they grab one, you know. Todd Lanz, if you know, from the Rotary, has spoke to me many times about sponsoring that type of thing. It's personal to him that he would prefer not so many plastic bags are used at the market. So that's a way that he can kind of get on that. So we've talked to him about that specifically.
Thank you. Thank you for providing all this information. Do we, and this may have to come from Mr. Campbell. Do we have a previous history earlier than two thousand sixteen with numbers that we can compare as to where the market was? And is there any data at some point that we can compare? I mean, I, I loved your, your impact, but I, I struggle with these numbers because I just, I'm not.
This is, I'm sorry, the, the numbers for the, the sales, we actually take sales from the vendors every week. We ask them to fill out a form that has their cash sales and credit card sales and then food assistance money. So we've added that all up and that was put into that report. We also do a vendor survey where we asked, for instance, the employee number. We asked how many employees that they, that are, that they employ at their, at their place. And that's, that's how we came up with the two hundred and twenty-four employees.
Well, that was going to be my next question was tracking the vendor's sales. I mean, the majority of their sales are cash sales. Are they actually reporting, you know, accurate numbers to you?
Well, it, it is a problem that I spoke to MIFMA and Farmers Market Coalition because they're, they're also working with us to collect more data like this. It is a problem for me to get, I, I get low numbers. Some of, there's less than a handful of our vendors that have had pushback about this, that their sales is not my business and that kind of a thing. Or they think that it's, we're reporting it to the IRS or something along those lines. So those numbers would only go higher if they were actually giving me the numbers. For instance, one of our vendors will sell out almost his whole table and he puts down twenty-five dollars cash. So it's absolutely not accurate. And I'm not fudging any numbers because I don't believe in that. But it would be higher if he actually put down what he did.
Now, you sort of led off with saying that there is a tremendous amount of competition with the markets. Have you explored whether the Celine market is even viable at this point in the competition with the other local markets? I mean, to where they are, I mean, it's, obviously it's a great community event and stuff, but at the end of the day, it has to serve a purpose beyond just being in fact. And so if your vendors are starting to move on, your customers are starting to move on, there's other two avenues. You're either going to have to pull them back, find a way, or you're going to have to decide, okay, this may not be the right avenue. Because what you're doing then is taking away from other markets, just sort of diluting in, not just other markets. You know, there's other businesses, there's Bushes, there are like McPherson's, there's a lot of these small pop-ups that are doing local. So I guess I wanted to know how you feel about that.
I feel that part of what you're saying is went into the decision that I made to close the Tuesday market. We could put more effort and money into that. We, we put so many hours of our volunteer hours and our own money to try to make that work. We both love the location and, and, and believed in it as, as a lot of the vendors did when we started it. But we just saw after putting an event together every single month that, that we tried our hardest to get people and advertise and everything, you know, with the limited amount of money that we had to advertise. But to advertise that, we were just not getting the customers in. And, and then the vendors started falling off regardless. And, and then this year, when I, when I surveyed them to see how mu, how many of them would be interested in the Tuesday market, only two said that they would actually come back. So I had already kind of saw the light coming, but, but I wanted to try, you know. The, when I was at the library, it was starting to decline and all of the vendors had talked to me about that. And then when we moved it to try again before we were canceling it, that didn't work either. So I, I did see the light with that and I saw that it was just not going to work. The Saturday market, we still get so many customers coming through there and that love it. I mean, if, if you saw our, our numbers here, total customer count that we do, because we do, you know, everybody, and we don't always get everybody, but we, we have to see them and to do it is almost nineteen thousand just for the summer market and it's Saturday, you know. So that's nineteen thousand residents that come and get their produce or get their items, enjoy coming out there as an event. And unlike other events, not, not to bash any events that happen in, in Celine, but unlike any events, as I was saying, I was trying to say, we, we offer the nutrition, the, the local foods, the connection with the people that, that you're buying from and the social aspect that goes along with it too. So I, I do personally believe in the benefit to our residents.
Now, do you track, like, all sorts of data, like, do you track weather?
Yes.
Because I know like with the Tuesday market, I think it rained every single Tuesday last year.
Yes, yes, we had a lot of bad luck with rain and weather for Tuesday. And, and I surveyed, I didn't get as many surveys for the Tuesday market customers as I did the Saturday market ones, just because we didn't get a lot. I think we got everybody that came through, you know, that day, but not a lot. And most of the people were concerned about either turning there because it was so busy on Michigan Avenue to turn into there, which personally I didn't think that that would be a problem because a lot of people go to the theater there and, you know, they make that turn already. But they, they noted that, they noted parking, maybe because they had to walk from a little bit, you know, to the area. And they, and there were people that complained about the smell because there's pigs right there by the parking lot as soon as you get out. So, you know, those were the main, those were the main concerns that they had. Yeah, did I answer your question? I'm sorry. I, yeah, I keep, we keep so much data, you have no. But that's, because of that kind of thing, because, because you want an explanation for one, why one week was less than the other. And if you don't keep that data, then you don't know.
I'm going to transition over to Mr. Campbell, going back to my previous, like, old information. Do we know how many hours the previous manager worked? I mean?
She charged about four hours, four hours a week.
She charged four hours?
Right, so she, but, and that, and obviously she began, so, so she did a terrific job establishing, right? So from two thousand to two thousand sixteen, plus the first sixteen seasons, she led the way. But what I will say that most, most markets, for instance, she would show up, make sure everybody got squared over, then she wouldn't stick around for the market. And then she may, then she may or may not come, come back at the end. So again, doing a lot less. And so certainly, and, and she would tell you the same thing, that, I mean, certainly was a passionate first. But again, when we talked, when, these are some of the things that we talked, began to talk about the last couple of years of as the competition, as, you know, Pittsfield got there, became competitive by having a Farmers Market in Chelsea. And, and so trying to figure out how do we do what we do? And, you know, what I can also tell you is the, as I understand it anyway, and then maybe Christine can speak better to this, but I, there's many discussions that, that we've had, other communities do invest a significant amount more into. I mean, there's some of these folks that, that are full-time employees of the governmental unit such as Pittsfield.
Pittsfield, yeah.
And they get health benefits, they get the whole nine yards. And this, we've done it this way forever, since, you know, since two thousand, to keep it as, make it as efficient as possible. So it's been contractual and I believe it should continue to be contractual. And, but now with, for safety reasons, whether it's handling the money, having money on hand, having additional folks at the, the two co-managers at the market during the market hours, I certainly agree with that. But yeah, so it is, it is a struggle. And I think, I mean, you certainly are asking the right questions, you know, do we continue on? And I mean, I, I would say, I, I hope we do because it is, it's, it's more, I mean, it's, it's an economic development tool. It's, it's, it's a community tool. I mean, it's, it, there's a lot of quality things that come out for relatively speaking minimal amount. However, having said that, I mean, yeah, we're looking at every penny and every nickel and every dime, absolutely. So, I mean, it's, to me, it's, what we're trying to do here with, with Christine and her team is to see if we can turn the corner to make this competitive, more competitive like it used to be, right? Because, because we were first, not, certainly not Ann Arbor or Ipsy, but as far as the smaller communities around, we were the first, a leader, if you will. And, and now folks have caught up and we're trying to figure out a way to distinguish ourselves again. So maybe we can at least get even again, if not pull ahead of them.
No, we have a chef that, that does the cooking.
Okay, so you'll own the equipment?
Yes. We will only, with equipment. So that's, it's. Yes, we are applying for a license for that. Most markets do purchase their own equipment and they do offer for other chefs in the area, other restaurant chefs and everything to come in. Our equipment on our budget here is going to be completely paid by the grant that we received from Washtenaw County Public Health Department. That's why we felt that would be an ideal thing to ask for in our grant. It's a one-time only kind of supplies for that type of thing. And, and so now we have this equipment on so that we can showcase some, some other chefs in the area have been interested in coming in and doing cooking demos, so we can have them come in as well. We feel like this is one of those things that will make us stand out a little bit more and that we can offer that other places like Bushes that carries local products or Argus cannot have. A lot of people don't know what to do with the produce that's in season and when it's in season. I mean, tomatoes, corn, everybody knows that. But do you know kohlrabi or, you know, lemongrass or swiss chard or different things like that, that, that I think that they would buy more of, possibly even be more healthy at eating if they knew what to do with it? You know, what I mean? So that's, that's what we're hoping for. We're hoping for the education of it, how to prepare something, especially something that's in season and that our vendors have so that we can support them as well through this effort. People really enjoy watching him cook and smelling. It's a, it's a great thing for the atmosphere of the market to have the scent kind of waft through. And, yeah, and then it gives them something else to, to, to look forward to, I guess. And they grab the recipes and they've told us, oh yeah, I tried that, it was great, blah, 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 blah. Right now, we've been doing them at the winter market with the equipment, well, limited, not a hundred percent equipment, but limited equipment that we purchased from the grant. And we are not giving out samples. We are just cooking so people can see how to prepare it and smell it. Because that, it's, you can't get away from. it and smell it, because that, you can't get away from the wonderful scents of these recipes that, that he is producing. And people are loving it already. It was something that we started as soon as we could, so that we could increase customers that come to the winter market.
Is, is that like a normal...
For other markets, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, in Ipsy, when I was there, we, we bought our own equipment, we actually bought too much, because the health inspector told us we needed a four, a four-compartment sink that was heated. So we bought a unit that had an onboard water heater that we just plugged in, it was $1,700 just for the sink item, and, and then we didn't end up needing it after all, unfortunately. So, so yes, they did that there for cooking demonstrations and nutrition education. Pittsfield has, has the equipment, but then the pots, I mean, the, the basic equipment, the hand wash stations and the heating items, and then they, they pay a chef $150 a day to come in and, and cook it. They still have to pay for the produce and everything, too. But she brings her pans, and then she produces the recipe, and then, and she cooks it. So that is an option, and I spoke to her about it, you know, to find out how much she charges, but I feel like this way, it's a little bit more personal, and, and we already have the grant for the material to give out, and, and that adds up the $150.
So let me switch back to this end of the table. Mr. Campbell, where are my liability hats? Here. Somebody eats food and gets sick. Who's liable?
I mean, the city, it's like...
It's going to be a city, it's going to be on the city, and then, like, health inspector and things like that issues.
Well, well, I was, that's a good question. So I, I would, my response would be, we'll have to double-check, because I don't know exact liability, if that's with the chef. I mean, we have, we would have our, we would have the permit or the license.
Yes, we're going to go through the complete license.
Yes, we'll, we'll get information into the...
And I, yeah, and I'm familiar with working with the, the health inspectors, both on the state level and the county level, because they come through and they regulate other items that are at the market, to make sure that they're within compliance. So I keep on top of what is the new rules, and, and I walk around the market, that's one of the things I do every, every day, that is a reason why, you know, somebody should be there, is because I, I check that, make sure everything is labeled correctly, that they're not trying to sell something that's, that they don't have a license for, that they have their licenses with them, and that if we get an inspector coming, which the M-DAR is stepping up their inspections, last year and then this year even more, to once, once a, one market a year, seeing them, it's been, it's been every three years or two years in the past, now they're doing it every year. So that's another reason why a market manager needs to be there in case the inspector comes, but, but every year, I go through training through MIFMA to make sure that we're, I'm up to date with all of the regulations, and I've gone through food, food safety training.
So for the, yeah, for the next work meeting, Mr. Campbell, if you could connect with legal counsel to Ms. Dillon's question, and I think she also requested some statistics relating to previous year markets as well.
I would, I don't know, what do we usually do?
Go back five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Even three is fine. I think you'd do, well...
So go back three more.
But I think, yeah, is there... No, the EDC budget is just blank.
She was, she was not, she never kept, kept those records, because she wasn't there on site.
So just financial numbers is what we would have?
Food assistance and financial numbers.
That's fine, that's fine, so we can just sort of see. The, the last question I'll ask about is your bank and bridge card fees, the 370, do you cost those back to, to customers?
No, I haven't done that. There is some sort of legal thing about that, that you're not allowed to charge the customers for, for that type of thing.
Because every nonprofit I use, like, all, the clubs all charge you fees back.
Yeah, you're not supposed to.
Well, okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah, there's, there's definitely some that incur. So, so then your plan is to maintain the summer market and the winter indoor market, in the current locations as is?
Correct.
And just eliminate Tuesdays?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gierba.
I have an advisory group that meets, we usually meet once a month, and it includes both community members that, that enjoy the market and, and vendors. They were very excited about that. One of the, Roxanne Chan is, is also on our advisory council, she's a nurse with MSU and does training, she's really excited about all of the, all of the health things that we might offer. They encouraged me to bring it to the city, that this was the next step that the market needed to do in order to compete.
And then, as I'm looking here, I was thinking, just that I can clarify, I see your numbers going forward, but I'm too overly optimistic, assuming that we could, you know, that you get everything set, based upon the city information you presented, I consider that that's going to be a great initiative, figures, and, and I don't know if that's a position to be issued, but you said it, one, five, four, five, six, seven...
Well, we have...
Don't you, I'm sorry, Trish Bennett, she's...
We have a review, and the thing we have to remember, please, the thing we have to remember is their market goes from May 1st, so we have a couple of months that carry over each year, but yes, I have sat down with the farmer's market as of Friday last week, and in the event that there is a deficit, which there does not appear to be one, in the event that there is a deficit, they would not get the amount in their contracts for this year. So I don't believe that we will have a deficit.
And have we looked at any other models, potentially moving the farmer's market underneath the Main Street oversight, or something of that nature, potentially returning it back to its roots? Because one of my questions that I have is, have we expanded too far? I remember when we first set this up, was the intent to provide a place for which vendors could come in and provide some aspects of, you know, selling their goods. At this point, I think we've gone quite farther than that, and my bigger concern is subsidizing the vendors that are coming in, in terms of, if they're not willing to give us their sales amounts, then I think we need to look at either our fees to increase, and at this point, I'll move it on to Ms. Taha for questions, but I am strongly figuring this is not a viable solution in the long run for the city, and there must be other options to potentially achieve it, especially when we look at all of our other potential concerns, including parking issues, local vendors not willing to participate any longer, you know, it's a privatized venture, we've got operational deficit, we have less offerings than we had before, it's not operationally effective as it was in the past, we're adding more hours, less days. From my perspective, and even from an operations thing, I know we're not supposed to make money, but it just looks like it's something that's one of those operations that can be handled by, or in the churches and local, and some of the other organizations potentially in town.
You make me want to scream. I completely disagree. I do, I mean, I, so one of the things that, as a regular summer downtown farmer's market attendee, I, I believe it is still a very lively, vital, vibrant addition to downtown. I'm one of the people who didn't go on, to the farmer's market on Tuesday, because it wasn't as convenient, but, and I, I think that we've also seen a really changing landscape about farmer's markets in the, how many, 18 years now, that this farmer's market has existed. And so I think we're looking at moving the farmer's market to a more best practices mode that other municipalities practice on a more limited Celine scale, we're not hiring a full-time market manager like Pittsfield Township. So I think that I would be fully in favor of supporting the market this year to moving to this new focus, concentrating on the Saturday market and enriching that. So I completely support it. And I'll stop with that.
Very good. Just one quick comment, because I want to transition to Director Scruggs, and then open it up for a, sort of a free dialogue on the budget, my goal is to get us out of here as close to 9:30 as possible. I share some of the concerns that were articulated by, by my colleagues this evening. I, as it relates to this specific request for our upcoming fiscal year, I, I don't have an issue making the additional contribution, but I do want to explore strategies that put the farmer's market on a more sustainable trajectory. And one of the things I'd like to offer to you, and your volunteers and your, your support staff, is, and I would liken this to what we did in recent years with the Celine Celtic Festival. For years, our efforts to solicit funds from the business community and the nonprofit community had, had languished, for lack of a better way to articulate it. And last year, and again this year, we have a really focused, coordinated, robust fundraising campaign, which generated for the Celtic Festival last year approximately $10,000. Our goal this year would be to exceed that, to be in the $12,000 range. And so I think that fundraising is sort of the low-hanging fruit, and could really help you, and I would love to assist in any way, way possible. It's something that I, I tried to take the lead on in regards to the Celtic Festival. So again, supportive of this for this upcoming fiscal year, again, I think Mr. Gierba's, some of Mr. Gierba's points have merit, that perhaps we need to explore the, the structure and sustainability, but if you'd like my help with fundraising, I'd be happy to offer that, and again, I think that's sort of the low-hanging fruit, and could really help you in a number of ways.
Yes, thank you. I, I did speak to Wally with Max about doing a dinner fundraiser, and we just didn't have time to kind of put it together, time, but...
Like, and we can talk about the approach that we use with the Celtic Festival, but we really try to, we're very flexible, and we will customize a sponsorship to meet the organization or individual's needs. And that seems to, to really appeal to a, a number of, of very diverse entities.
Is that sponsorships, then, or is it...
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah.
With different levels and different, and different types of, of recognition for individuals or their businesses based on the, the level of giving.
Yes, we, we put that together, too. I can send it to everybody, so...
I think I have that.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to make sure that, how we're disseminating it, and how we're, make sure that our messaging is tight in regards to what the benefits are to the festival, and I think they, I think they are numerous. I think it brings a lot of energy and excitement to downtown, and I would note, Ms. Taha, I think, touched on this, it also, and I've heard this directly from entrepreneurs and business types in our downtown, the relocation of the farmer's market from Liberty School to its downtown location, beginning the 1st of May, benefits a number of our businesses. And I would also note, it benefits a number of businesses that on the surface, it would seem to compete with. And it's quite the contrary, it, it complements them. So ensuring its success and vitality, I think, is really important. It's just the trajectory that we're on right now is, is not sustainable, but I think there are things that we can do to, to change that. Okay? So we will revisit this in a week, Mr. Campbell will be getting us some additional information, or Ms. Bennett will be getting us some numbers, and then you'll also connect with the attorney about liability, correct? Very good. Ladies, thank you very much. Ms. Scruggs, do you want to assume the, the seat that Christine was in, and maybe briefly, very briefly, touch on your memo of the 26th of April, and then you can address any questions that council members have? Thank you, ladies, appreciate your time.
Two things. One, one, for the market, we do have our yoga in the park, which we would take one of your signs, that we, we've always done this, and make a special announcement after yoga in the park is open, for people to go up to the market. Definitely will want to encourage people to do that, and that's one reason why we have yoga in the park at Henny, is to help bolster the downtown businesses and, and the market. I don't think this is really working. Oh, here we go. Excellent. The other one, I had another thought about the market, but I can't, I wrote it down, I can't remember it. Okay, but I'll, I'll call. They're gone. They're gone, okay.
Email them.
Yes. So just, this is a follow-up from my very lengthy presentation the other day. But we went, I, I met with Joanne and Mickey to kind of address some of the, the questions that council had regarding our fund balance, and addressing some of the CIP projects that, rather than keep pushing things off. Just briefly, the, the things that we did change is we, instead of phasing the pool deck resurfacing, after a lot of thought and consideration on that, it didn't really make sense for us to phase that, because that would, that would make us have to be closed for at least six weeks every single fall, which is not good for our business. So really, putting this together, having it one project, get it completed at once, is, is the best option. So we ended up, rather than phasing that, we put it into one lump sum. The other thing that we, I did consider, and I talked with my maintenance man about, were the interior doors. We have several doors that are in very poor condition, that do need to be replaced, but we have others that could go on for another year. So we did split that one, which is the, originally, we had $17,000 for the interior pool doors, so we, we split that into $8,500 one year, $8,500 the, the other. And then we ended up keeping all of our other capital improvement projects in line. And then with that, that we put together what we would forecast our fund balance to be. So I think that addresses some of the questions that, that Dean, you especially had.
Any questions for Director Scruggs? Carla, thanks very much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you to work on this. Good changes. So I know that Councilwoman Dillon has at least one item that she wants to bring up. Let's start with, with her, and then if there are other issues regarding the budget, the chair would be happy to entertain those. Councilwoman Dillon, the floor's yours.
Thank you. I wanted to make mention that in our, sorry, I wanted to make mention that in our new budget, there is no longer a line item for the drug task force. The mayor and I had a discussion about it, and we both feel that it's important for the city to have presidents, task force, and sure that she's supportive of the task force. So I would encourage adding a line item back in. The current line item is at 1,500. I, I'm happy with 1,000, if we can find a way to do that.
So, i- if I, if I may, Councilwoman Dillon. So Councilwoman Dillon and I were conversing last night about this issue, and I asked her, what, what does she, what would she, as the chair, deem to be an appropriate, but also realistic amount? She suggested the $1,000, which I fully support. To me, the issue is less about the dollar amount, although I think making a contribution and supporting the group's initiatives is important. I think there's an issue, there's an issue of symbolism and optics here, which is, as you'll recall, the city was the entity that, that created first a task force, which then morphed into an independent nonprofit. And this is a group that, this is going to be, their mission and what they hope to accomplish, it is going to be a long haul. There is no silver bullet, there's no quick fix. This is going to be, their efforts are, will entail continuing to, to educate and inform and direct people towards, towards needed resources. And I think that if the group is going to ask other entities and individuals to support the, their efforts, I think it's important that the city, who, who again, was the genesis for creating the group, provides some level of, of financial support. So again, as Councilwoman Dillon indicated, she and I chatted about this last night, I think that $1,000 is, is a reasonable amount to, to put back in the budget. Ms. McClellan.
I don't have any...
Did you write that down?
My question is, can we just utilize school resource officer as part of that task force, or is that... task force, or do we have some kind of, in my mind, that's where the front line is going to be? And so dedicating, you know, the fact that we're dedicating this school resource officer, first of all, and second of all, you know, giving it a little bit of money, but I think the school resource officer is that front line to supporting that effort. So it's not like the city is doing nothing?
No.
You have nothing, or you know...
Yeah, I would, certainly a school resource, obviously, the mission of the school resource officer is broader than addiction or substance abuse. Certainly, and I don't know if the chief is still here, the teen curriculum that Officer Reeves utilizes, there is a component of that that talks about the dangers of substance abuse and addiction, is that correct?
Correct, whether it would be alcohol, nicotine, tobacco.
Elusive substances.
Elusive substances.
So again, it's a component, but not the only component of that particular curriculum. Nor would substance abuse and addiction be the only focus of the school resource officer. So you're right. Is there some overlap? Absolutely, but like I said, like Councilwoman Dillon said, I think some even nominal contribution is required. Did you have something you want to add?
I just wanted to add, though, our primary focus now is not on children, students, adolescents, that's all. It's more educating parents. Kids have learned this stuff through the years. They've gone through these, the NARA programs when they were kids. They learn about this all the time at schools. It's the parents, the grandparents, and the community of the ward that are just in denial for the most part about it, and just educating them is a big part of our mission at this point.
Ms. Girbaugh?
Who else is contributing to it at this point besides us?
We've gotten private grants. We've gotten grants from San Francisco Public Health, and we look over the avenues, and the schools are supposed to have a line item also.
And no annual budget or figure that you all... I'm just curious from understanding what your whole scope is, what you're doing, and actually, a presentation to the council would probably be great.
Oh, we are making a presentation with the council on May 27th.
Okay.
And she and I actually previously communicated about that, well, in advance of this budget issue.
I mean, I don't have an issue with $1,000 because we do that, but what it would be helpful, though, is, do we have a lot, any other of these? Because we used to do these things where we had like a $1,000 contribution. If you could summarize all those up, unless we don't have that many anymore.
What I would say is, we shouldn't have anything without service, right, getting a service quid pro quo, right? So reference the, the only one that I, that comes, I'm not suggesting we don't, but the one that comes to my mind right now is the leadership, Celine Leadership, and we actually, the city has an agreement with Celine Leadership in order to provide that $1,000 worth of contribution to support them. So we can't, we can't simply just say, I want to contribute or donate. You need, you need to have, well, you need to get something in return. Now, having said that, I don't think it's that far of a reach to, and I will certainly talk with City Attorney Smith to come up with a suggestion, because certainly, they are providing a service to the community to educate the, I mean, I'm just thinking in my head, that's if council wants to go down that avenue to create a contribution, you know, whether it be an annual contribution or whatever, that there be an agreement in place to substantiate that.
Yeah, just understanding that, and I didn't know what other, I knew we had one other one, and that's the one that helped me with Celine Leadership.
Well, one of the, Councilwoman Dillon and I just spoke about this just in advance of tonight's meeting, I think one of the, I love this initiative, because I think it's very effective, is that there is a letter sent out, I believe, are you in the third or fourth year of doing it?
Yes.
Yeah, third year. There's a letter sent out to the parents of every graduate of Celine area schools, and the letter is signed by our police chief, a lieutenant from the Michigan State Police, I believe, Chief Hasburger from Pittsfield, as well as Sheriff Jerry Clayton, outlining, you want to, maybe you can elaborate better than I can.
Well, we kind of enhanced the letter this year to kind of share a little bit about some of the penalties, how much time someone can spend in jail, if they provide alcohol to minors, opening house parties, and then created a checklist of tips for things that, you know, conversation starters, that parents or guardians can have with the students about, you know, putting a safety plan in place, what they should and shouldn't be doing, you know, during prom and graduation season. So it's a concerted effort by all of the law enforcement officials and the chair of the task force, and the superintendent, Grayton, from the schools, to really kind of show a unified effort to educate, you know, those in our community. The school district's almost 100 square miles, so we tried to be inclusive as we could in all of the entities involved.
And with the expansion of Legal Merrill Line potentially down the road, I think we need to continue to provide this kind of education.
And if I, this is what I like about the letter, if I'm not mistaken, the letter comes to the parents of Brian Marle in an envelope that says like Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office, Michigan State Police, so my hunch is they tend to open that letter.
Yes, that's correct.
And so the marketing and the approach, I think, is clever and ultimately beneficial in terms of getting a narrative out there. Mr. Seale?
Sometime in years passed, and I think we made a loan to this group, and the promise that it was going to be renewed, has it been renewed?
Yes, yes.
Please.
So I would, I look forward to the report and seeing how the funds are, how the funds are directed. Where does this sit in our budget?
There isn't a line in the budget.
Okay. But there, okay, so it just, it doesn't show up because there isn't, okay, I thought it might...
As Councilwoman Dillon said, in fiscal year 17, 18, it was $1,500.
Right, and I just, there is a line. I was just wondering where it is.
Like before it went...
Oh, before it became an independent, yeah.
Became independent, and we were funding it. We were giving, taking donations, and we have, and it's in, it's in record culture.
So the line is still there. I just overlooked that it hadn't been funded.
No amount to it with, in 2019.
So barring some insights from legal counsel, that is unanticipated. No one has objections to a $1,000 line item for the drug task force? Okay. Very good. Anything else regarding the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget at this time? Again, we will revisit it at a work meeting beginning at 6:30 next Monday. What do you point at?
Our school rates.
What would you like to say about that?
Well, we do have to adopt our budget by June 1st, and I just wanted to make sure that the council is aware that in addition to that, we will be presenting the water and sewer rates that will support the water and sewer budget, and our CIP document, which supports the streets budgets that at this point you haven't seen yet, and so I was just making sure that, you know, if you want to have work meetings, typically, we have had work meetings on both the CIP, and we've had work meetings on the water and sewer rates, so I just wanted to...
Are you prepared to do that next week?
In addition to...
How many minutes?
The water and sewer rates are ready to go, and the CIP, yeah, I mean, we can be prepared.
Would you want to bump it to six, then?
It's going to be that I don't know that, so, we have to look at the budget again and make sure everybody, we have to handle changes.
So we got, we got the budget as a whole, in its totality. Jeff is reporting back on some street maintenance, and then we'll revisit that, and also making a contribution to OPEC retention liability with our unrestricted fund balance, and then we would be adding water and sewer rates as well as the CIP. I think 90 minutes is possible, I think an hour is far too short.
That's fine. If staff is ready to go on, I mean, if you're ready to go on water and sewer rates and
CIP, I was not aware that you were prepared to present on that. I mean, I think the sooner you present, the better, but I want you to be prepared.
So when you say the budget in its entirety, you're meaning all the funds?
All the funds.
Everything, so that'll be all those...
The goal would be to close the work session and have a consensus on the budget.
I've got, we're good with it, I just want to make sure that that gives everybody time enough to comprehend it in a week. And I, well, right. We only have one meeting after that.
Well, I have, I don't have any doubt that we can develop consensus on the budget by the end of the next meeting, if we're adding water and sewer rates and CIP.
Oh, water and sewer rates support the water and sewer budget, and the CIP supports your streets budgets.
Right, right, okay.
So...
It makes sense to me, I'm just saying that's, it is a lot to digest.
Right, and I just, I wanted to get that out there, and I mean, we can get you the information as soon as we have it available for, I mean, the water sewer rates and the CIP, we can get that out, so you can start looking at it, and then we'll get you the rest of the budget as soon as possible. Before, I mean, my intent would be to get it to you before next Friday, so that you can start looking at it.
The only thing, my understanding from tonight, the only thing we're changing in the budget is adding a $1,000 line item for the drug task force.
General fund rate.
Okay, all right. Ms. Girbaugh?
There was a request to have the budget documentation in an Excel spreadsheet so that you can sort it and look at it that way. The BSNA software does allow that to happen. I have some tweaking I have to do with all these account number conversions. The information that you've been getting is still with Joanne's spreadsheets, and Joanne's spreadsheets are quite cumbersome, so to distribute them in Excel format is not possible, but once I get it, the tweaking in the BSNA, make sure all the account numbers line up, because I still have some that I haven't converted, that Joanne converted in her spreadsheet, so...
Okay. Ms. Girbaugh, did you have a question?
You know, we talked about OPEC and pension and debt, and roads and all that stuff. We don't have to make those decisions at this point, those can be amendments in next year's budget, correct?
You can assign them, but if they were in one, and he just wants to show that fee unassigned from balance, it involves extra money. You can make a decision to assign it at the end, you don't pay it or anything, where you just designate it to...
Right.
We have unassigned, though, too.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah.
And we won't, we won't actually have a definitive number on that until our year closes.
No, that's what I wanted to make sure.
And we have more, we have one, no, no, that is a discussion for the FY18 budget, that we won't have a definitive number until after we close the books, and we're going to have one more, or at least two more budget amendments coming forward that may impact that number. So using, I mean, that isn't, that isn't what has to happen for the FY19 budget. The FY19 budget, we have to review the rate study, we have to review the street CIP. That has to be done in adoption of the FY19 budget. The fund balance for FY18, it won't usually be done until after our audit, which will probably be in October.
I get that, it's just we've got a good, you know, some momentum going on that.
I agree. I don't disagree, it's just that we also don't want...
No, I want to make sure those weren't able to, so, and what you're saying is basically this stuff, this the finalization, the actual budget that's required for the first step.
So similar to the strategic plan, as soon as you have documents available regarding water and sewer rates and CIP, if you want to email them out to City Council, that would be terrific. Is everyone, I need you to confirm this with Councilwoman Mitchell tomorrow, if you would, is everyone able to meet at 6:00 PM next Monday? Does that work? Okay. And of course, as I noted earlier, if you have issues or questions that come up regarding the general fund or subsequent to you receiving the water and sewer rate study and the CIP document, any questions, please direct those to staff just as soon as you are able.
Okay. Because that one issue that we'll have at that meeting, we'll be setting their, no, the second meeting is when we set the rate. This first meeting, you have a special assessment hearing for the fire special assessment, and the budget, the general fund budget stands right now is using our general fund dollars on that, so we would not have to incorporate the special assessment. So just things that we normally go through, that we really haven't had a whole lot of time to talk about, that I wanted to remind you of, that the second meeting in May, Joanne, I'm looking at you to confirm this, is when we set the budget, the millage rate, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we will have to have a good, healthy discussion. I mean, that's what our general fund, that's what you've been looking at. All we're doing is adding $1,000, so we're good keeping it the way it is, but just so that we're all on the same page with it.
Yeah, we've never talked about adjusting the millage rate, so I think that's a...
Right, but...
Foregone conclusion, but yeah.
We're already moving into June already, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, sorry, folks, to bombard you with that stuff at the, I don't know.
So just quickly, you said the water, the documents regarding the water and sewer, those are ready?
The water and sewer rates and the CIP documents are ready.
Okay.
Well, I mean, all the time you're checking, you've been working on the other street stuff, and I don't know if we're moving on to...
Well, as ready...
Is there a way to get those to us before...
That's exactly what I just said, that I would try to get those out to you.
Yeah, I did want it to...
Yes.
Soon as they're ready, to send them out to the group electronic.
Yes, that's what Brian and I both just said, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, friends, for the good of the order? We went over three hours, but we made some substantial progress tonight. It was a good discussion. Mr. Seale, did you have something? Is there a second? So it's been properly moved by Seale, seconded by McClellan, to adjourn the city council work meeting at 9:42 PM. All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, this meeting is adjourned. We'll see you next Monday at 6:00 PM.